Members of council and staff and guests, please take their chairs.
Oh, sorry. Why did center attention, Mr. Chair? I'm sorry. That's so rare.
So, good morning. I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, May 14th, to order. Mr. Clerk, could you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Okay, we have quorum. Members of council, we have quorum. The region of Durham exists on lands that the Mississauga and Anishnaig inhabited for thousands of years prior to European colonization. These lands are the traditional treaty territories of the nations covered under the Williams Treaties, including the Mississaugas of Skugog Island First Nation, Alderville First Nation, Hiawatha First Nation, Curve Lake First Nation, and the Chipewa Nations of Georgina Island, Bosa and Rama. We honor, recognize, and respect the indigenous peoples as the right holders and stewards of the lands and waters on which we have the privilege to live. In our efforts towards reconciliation, we continue to build, strengthen relationships with First Nations, as well as the growing Inuit communities and large Métis community here in Durham. We commit to learning from indigenous values, knowledge, building opportunities for collaboration, and recognizing that we are all connected. Mr. Clerk, if you could do a roll call, please? Oh, sorry, sorry. Declaration of keen interest. Seeing none? We'll continue. Members of council, I received a letter from the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators, and I want to take this moment to recognize our Regional Solicitor and Director of Legal Services, Jason Hunt. This letter talks about his remarkable tenures of service in municipal government and management roles. Jason, congratulations and thank you for your continued service.[188.26][188.26](APPLAUSE). We'll move on to presentations. Our first presentat-- oh, there are no statutory public meetings. We'll move on to presentations. First presentation, 4.1, is Sandra Austin, Executive Director of Strategic Initiatives, and Kelly LaRaca, Chief of the Mississaugas of Skugog Island, on the bilateral, Durham bilateral agreement with the MSIFN. Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, you might as well. Good morning, Regional Chair Henry, members of committee, staff and honored guests. It's my absolute pleasure to-- Yeah, thank you, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here today alongside Chief Kelly LaRaca from the Mississaugas of Skugog Island First Nation, to speak with you today about the creation of a bilateral agreement between MSIFN and the region of Durham. So, to start us off in a good way, I'd like to invite anyone present to join in a smudge, and this is a way that we can open this meeting with good hearts, good minds, and good spirits. Our Manager of Indigenous Relations, Debbie Ellis, will make her way around, as I provide you with a bit of context around how we got here today. So, as you know, Durham Region is committed to strengthening our relationships with indigenous communities through the development of strong partnerships and meaningful engagement. And as I walked around the room today, I can see many of you wearing your MSIFN pins and pins from various indigenous communities, so thank you for showing that support today. Regional departments have hosted staff development days that have focused on their specific legislative contexts, on terminologies, on rights, on title, on treaties, on indigenous governance and relationship building. And notably, we do have many departments who have incorporated additional learning into their professional development. We also have a formal water and wastewater service agreement with MSIFN as one example. And corporately, our work substantially was advanced in 2017 with the hosting of a four-part Indigenous Workshop Series on Histories and Relationship Building. A land acknowledgement was first read at the September 25th, 2019 Regional Council meeting, and there have been 62, now I'm corrected, 63, including today, meetings where the land was acknowledged, along with the region's stated commitment to build opportunities for collaboration, along with honoring, recognizing, and respecting indigenous peoples as the rights holders and stewards of the waters and lands on which we all have the privilege to live. We do encourage staff to personalize their acknowledgements and reflect on the land and how it relates to their work. As government officials, we all know that policies and strategies can either be used to strengthen communities or to erode and eradicate rights. And so what we're proposing here today is a true government-to-government relationship. In 2021, the region's senior leadership team participated in an in-depth, three-part Indigenous Cultural Safety Training session, which provided a sound foundational knowledge to incorporate into the development and delivery of regional programs and services. MSIFN and Curve Lake First Nation were heavily involved in the development of the region's 2021 Nuclear Sector Strategy, Empowering the Community. And this included co-creating policy content along with regional staff. That same year, on National Indigenous Peoples' Day, the MSIFN flag was raised to fly permanently at regional headquarters alongside Durham Region and the eight local area municipalities. In 2022, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Staff developed a series of learning modules on indigenous histories and reconciliation, covering topics such as historical context and the seven grandfather teachings of love, respect, bravery, truth, honesty, humility, and wisdom. These are moral stepping stones that we can all aspire to live by. They also worked directly with community and a local indigenous artist to design and install a new orange crosswalk at the Pathway to Reconciliation plaque at regional headquarters as part of the Remembering the Children memorial. The budget approval for the Manager of Indigenous Relations position provided the capacity to strengthen community relationships. Indigenous businesses were invited to participate in our business showcase series to highlight their products and services to the region, and eight local area municipalities based on key themes. And 2024 saw a number of developments, including the Durham Region Truth and Reconciliation Awareness Walk, featuring the work of Niall Johnston on a DRT bus wrap. When visiting the Babadon Gallery, an MSIFN venture on Skugog Island, staff were introduced to the work of Brent Hardesty, and collaborated on the installation of the work, Praying to Tree of Life, prominently displayed now across multiple windowpanes in the Galleria of Durham Region Headquarters. We look forward to a ceremony with the artist and community to formally welcome this piece. And through the Public Art and Creative Placemaking Program, and supported through our proposed bilateral agreement, we are building lasting relationships that honor and celebrate indigenous culture and artistic expression. Internally, we've refreshed our Inclusion Indigenous Advocacy Subcommittee, which now has majority representation of indigenous voices. And staff participated in community conversations on indigenous inherent jurisdiction and Canada's political, economic, and legal landscapes. We also have a new Project Manager Indigenous Implementation within the Works Department that manages engagement and consultation on water and wastewater projects. A significant step was the development of a guideline and spaces to support indigenous employees and guests in engaging in sacred smudging practice as we're having here this morning. We created a dedicated space here at headquarters to welcome ceremony. So this brings us up to date. In January, this council approved the 2025 Durham Region Ten Year Strategic Plan, which confirmed the foundational priority of building and strengthening relationships with indigenous communities. Following many, many, many months of engagement and reflection, we are oh-so-close to releasing a fully revised version of the Durham Region Indigenous Engagement Guidelines entitled Braiding Pathways: Guidelines for Building Respectful and Collaborative Relationships. This is a comprehensive document that covers intent, knowledge, and actions involved in meaningful engagement, as well as an accompanying partnership pathway to assist staff in building those successful relationships, and will be very pleased to share these resources with area municipalities as soon as it is available. There is considerable interest from the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, which has its own Indigenous Advisory Council, and other organizations in reviewing the knowledge contained within this document. And so now it's time to put our commitment into action. Last fall, Chief LaRaca contacted me to discuss the potential for a bilateral agreement between MSIFN and the region that would focus initially on consultation and collaboration on ecological protection, as well as regional economic development. The agreement builds on our existing collaborative relationship and establishes principles for open, honest, and meaningful communications on matters of mutual interest. Supported by a work plan, the agreement would enable us to move forward more quickly on opportunities. As a very early example, there is interest in us working together to access funding that is available to municipalities with existing First Nations partnerships to accelerate economic development initiatives. This is all part of recognizing the economic power of indigenous communities and working together to build vibrant communities that can prosper together. So I did think, Chief LaRaca, that you might not want a picture of your headshot up on screen as you were talking, so I did take the opportunity to include information about the upcoming powwow, so that everyone may have a look while you're speaking, but it's my distinct pleasure to welcome Chief Kelly LaRaca to speak about the value of this partnership to the Mississaugas of Skugog Island First Nation. Chief Kelly?
Me guetch, Sandra. Anin Bojou, na dwe ma kwakwa indigenousakas, wabsi shi dohem, chichak dohem, skugog meniseng donjaba. I just introduce myself and my Anishnaig Moan language. Of course, I've met most of you, but for those who haven't, my name is Kelly LaRaca, and I proudly serve as the chief of the Mississaugas of Skugog Island First Nation. And I'm pleased to report that I've just been acclaimed for four more years, so I'll have four more years of hanging out with everybody.[794.44][794.44](APPLAUSE). I just want to say good morning, or mano gejeb, as is commonly said in my language. Good morning, Regional Chair Henry and members of the committee staff, and of course, the distinguished guests who are present. I'm very honored, deeply honored, to stand here today alongside of your colleague Sandra Austin, to speak about this bilateral agreement between the Mississaugas of Skugog Island First Nation, or MSIFN, as we're commonly known, and the region of Durham. This agreement marks what I would think, or what I say is a pivotal step towards a true government-to-government relationship that is grounded in mutual respect, collaboration, and a shared commitment to building thriving, sustainable communities. For MSIFN, this partnership is a powerful opportunity to amplify our voice, yes, and advance our shared goals of ecological protection, economic development, and infrastructure growth. The region of Durham has shown a dedicated, sorry, a genuine dedication to reconciliation through the symbolic actions, such as raising our flag permanently at regional headquarters, implementing indigenous cultural safety training, and creating dedicated spaces for sacred practice. These types of efforts reflect a commitment to honoring what I believe is an ongoing relationship with the region, to honoring our rights, of course, and to honoring our roles as land stewards. The value of this bilateral agreement between our two governments lies in its potential to deliver meaningful outcomes for both of our communities. Through consultation and collaboration, yes, we can protect our shared environment and ensure development respects the lands and the waters upon which we all rely. Economically, this partnership unlocks opportunities to access federal and provincial funding programs, such as the First Nation Municipal Community Economic Development Initiative, or CEDI, as it's also known, as well as major clean energy economic programs to build new projects tied to the current tariff challenges. These funds can drive projects that create jobs, that support First Nations businesses, and foster innovation, benefiting MSIFN and the broader Durham Region. In the realm of infrastructure, this agreement strengthens our ability to collaborate on critical projects, particularly in water and wastewater systems, where MSIFN now has significant expertise, building and operating a site-specific infrastructure that is on our island. The region's addition of a dedicated, sorry, the region's addition of dedicated indigenous staff further enhances the region's capacity to engage meaningfully on these initiatives. Together, we can leverage federal and provincial funding opportunities, such as the Canada Community Building Fund, or indigenous-specific infrastructure programs, like the Indigenous Community Infrastructure Fund, to modernize and expand infrastructure through capital partnerships. These investments can improve access to clean water, enhance wastewater management, and support sustainable community growth, ensuring long-term benefits for both MSIFN and Durham Region residents. By aligning our priorities and combining our expertise, we can submit stronger funding applications that demonstrate our shared commitment to reconciliation and community well-being. A key example of our collaborative potential, in my view, is MSIFN's partnership with Envest Corp., which aligns with Envest's 10-year contract with Durham Region to process source-separated organics, or SSOs, from households across the region. Our major investment partnership supports the production of renewable natural gas from the household organic waste, contributing to a circular economy by reducing landfill waste and generating clean energy. By working together, MSIFN and Durham Region can explore opportunities to integrate such innovative projects into our bilateral agreement, enhancing environmental sustainability and creating economic benefits through shared infrastructure initiatives. In my view, this agreement is more than just a document. It is a dynamic framework for real action, built on open communication and a shared vision. It enables us to seize opportunities more swiftly, address challenges more collaboratively, and access resources that will shape a prosperous future for all. MSIFN is excited to deepen this partnership with the region of Durham, confident that our collaboration will not only strengthen our communities, but also serve as a model for others, showcasing the transformative power of reconciliation in action. I want to thank you in advance for your commitment to this relationship. I do see something here that I want to just note. It's funny, this morning, as I was thinking about the presentation that I was going to make, I thought about this, actually, and I thought, it's a darn shame I don't have a beaded wampum belt to display to people during my presentation, and then it showed up. It's so funny how things like that happen. But this wampum, of course, is, it's a Houghton Ashoni reference, but it's an actual agreement. It's an honor or a contract that was beaded in a physical form and exchanged. And what it's meant to connote is the principle of autonomy. So, in this, in this context, there are two parallel lines representing two canoes in the same waterway, but neither canoe is meeting. They're respecting the other as being autonomous governments. And it's a principle of non-interference that this contract, that this contract connotes. But what I, what I've often said to our elders is, well, what happens now when this waterway is crowded, right? We're more populated than we ever were. So I've asked our elders, what happens to this belt? It is a form of law. It's an actual form of law. It's held in every law school across the country. It's up in our buildings in Queen's Park, in the House of Commons. And it, the reason it is, is because, again, it's reflecting upon Canada's indigenous history, or Canada's indigenous constitution, I should really say. So, why is it important? Because now it's getting harder. If a canoe trips up, the other is affected. It's not the way it once was. And so we need to work together collaboratively, hence why we're here with this agreement, to try and remind ourselves that we can add to this body of jurisprudence, which is what it is, and not take away the belt or the notion of that non-interference, but add to that body of law, which is what we're doing with this agreement. So, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for bringing that up to the table, and thank you all for listening. Me guetch.
Thank you, Chief. Don't leave. We have questions, so first is Counselor Lee.
Good morning, Chair, and thank you. Thank you, Chief LaRaca, for joining us this morning, and thank you, Ms. Austin, for the presentation. Obviously, an agreement like this is long overdue as far as Durham Region is concerned, so I'm glad it's in place. My first question is, in terms of the scope of the bilateral agreement, is there an opportunity to expand the scope over coming weeks, years, to include other things? I can't think of offhand, but just, we're not limited to just the scope. Like eventually, we will possibly envision broadening it, I hope?
I'll just start to say, yes, thank you, Counselor Lee, and through the chair. It's important to note that we work together on what the initial agreement would include, and there is an understanding that we'll review on a regular basis. We had thought, you know, there's a lot of work going on in Health and Social Services, for example, which you will know is not reflected here, so perhaps that was an example that you were thinking of. So we're starting with some priority areas, being economic development and ecological protection, but from my perspective, certainly, we'll see how it goes over the next while, and there would be an opportunity to expand.
Great. My second question is, so if the lower municipalities have any kind of questions regarding anything covered in the bilateral agreement, would the expectation be to go through Durham Region to express the ask, or would it be directly to go to the Mississaugas of Skugog Island, as it currently is?
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. I really appreciate that question. When we were working on this draft, we wanted to be very intentional, that we were not overstepping regional authority, jurisdiction, particularly in our new context with respect to community growth. And so individual area municipalities have their own relationships with MSIFN and other indigenous communities within the Williams Treaty First Nations, and so this is not intended to overstep a road or take away any of those existing relationships. However, what we were finding is that some municipalities don't have the capacity to establish relationships, and have been asking, and would be very comfortable to come along to a regional table where we're having those conversations, kind of for access. And so we can broaden the table, certainly, if there are municipalities that are interested in joining the conversation, but if there are existing partnerships and discussions, this is not meant to supersede those.
But in, to kind of rephrase, if the lower tier needed the region to kind of perhaps act as an intermediary, that is available to connect with the Mississaugas of Skugog Island?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you both for this, again, long overdue. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Watten.
Thank you, Chair Henry, and through you to Sandra and to Chief LaRaca. First of all, thank you for bringing this agreement forward. I do have a couple of comments and a couple of questions, and I guess maybe a few concerns. So, on page 11 of your presentation, it shows braiding pathways, which is the guidelines, and then an engagement guideline, partnership pathway. I truly think these are great, but I don't know what the content of those are, and I feel that if we're going to sign an agreement, we should be aware of what those, the contents of, for example, those things are. You know, it's, I'm not sure when you say that we're all going to work together, or that the other municipalities can join, and so on and so forth, but what does that really mean? Because I'm not getting that from the presentation. And I know that we're going to develop a work plan and so on, but I would put forth that I think, I know you've engaged with many, many people, but I also know that this municipality, I speak only for my municipality, we were not engaged. And I think as neighbors to the MSIFN, I think it would have been very prudent and respectful to have this conversation with us as well prior to the signing of any agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Watten, and I'll start, and I'll invite Chief LaRaca to contribute as well, and through the chair. So, the braiding pathways document, I would like to clarify, so existing within the region, we have a community engagement toolkit and a suite of templates and documents that were designed internally to assist staff in strong community engagement. So anytime we're going out and speaking with community, and want their input and want their advice, and we're very clear about, are we simply informing to say, you know, a road's going to be closed? Are we looking for input, that we want to take that input away and have it contribute to our decision-making? Or are we looking for true collaboration, where we'll be working together on a project? So we always want staff to think about what they're, what they want to get out of community engagement before they embark upon it. And we've had those in place for a couple of years. They're through Allison Burgess's team in Communications and Engagement. They work exceptionally well, but a big piece that was missing was indigenous engagement, because it is separate, it is unique, it is distinct when we're speaking to rights holders, and we didn't have a lot of regional expertise on what that should look like. So this braiding pathways document that I referenced on Slide 11 is simply that, it is simply an indigenous engagement version of our community engagement toolkit. So if there's a project that either requires or would like indigenous input, what are the steps that staff should take to undertake that engagement? And it takes them through, thinking about, what is your intent? What does your, what do your actions say? Where are you in the project? Are you simply informing? And it gives people some practical knowledge and background on how they should approach that engagement. So again, that was created internally for regional staff, but we're happy to share it. It does not, there's no sort of commitment or specifics in that regard. It provides some historical context. In terms of how the relationship looks going forward, and I'll say that, yes, we did not do widespread area municipal engagement when we developed this, because we wanted to initially focus on pieces that were within, again, regional responsibility, not wading into local area municipality, which, as we know, is changing. We wanted to respect that boundary. That being said, we are completely open to having conversations about, as Counselor Lee requested or asked, where the region might be able to play kind of that facilitator role, then we will be there within the spirit of this agreement to be able to do that, but certainly not looking to take away existing relationships. You are the closest neighbor, of course, Mayor Watten, and Chief Kelly, did you have anything to add to that, in terms of your existing relationships and how it pertains to municipalities?
As Sandra's already mentioned, we didn't intend for this to take away from any existing relationships with municipalities that are connected to either Skugog or other Williams Treaties First Nations. Our staff had been enabled and requested to work with regional staff to creating this document, and we were confident that it would be received with, I guess-- document, and we were confident that it would be received with, I guess, I guess, I don't want to say joy, but I figured it would be well-received, I should say, and that it wouldn't be seen as a hindrance. We have our own relationship with the Skugog Township, and we have our own relationship with the regional government as well, hence why I've been here, I think, opening your first term of the regional government with a talk, and I appreciate that our government has those relationships on a government-to-government basis, both with the region and the township. We have engaged with the township repeatedly on what we see as a need for meaningful consultation. We've made submissions at various hearings that the township has held in respect to decisions concerning land. We have an ongoing interest, obviously, with the activities that are going on in the town, and we'll continue to show up and be a community partner at those functions and in the decision-making. We, yeah, I thought this would be seen as something that was accepted in a good way with the intention that it was built, so I hope that it can be, that it can be so. Megwetch.
Mayor Watten?
Thank you, and don't get me wrong, it's not that I don't agree with it, and that I have a big problem with it. The problem I have is that we were not consulted, and in the vein of consultation and working together and being teams and establishing economic development and everything that is required, and that we talk about doing jointly, I just feel that we should have also been made aware of this before I read it on an agenda, and that's what I'm struggling with. And so, then when I look through the report and the plan with, sadly, those eyes, I think, you know, what does that really mean to us? Because in a very sad sense to me, it means that we were secondary to this. And I know it was not the intent, but I have to say it because that's how I feel. You know, we work very hard as a municipality, and I work very hard with the chief, to keep our relationship strong and so on, and I certainly don't have a problem with the agreement per se, but I do have a problem with how we got to it. Thank you. Those are my comments, Chair Henry.
Thank you. Counselor, Mayor Pietri.
Thanks, Chair, and good morning to everyone. Director, thank you for the presentation, and Chief LaRocca, congratulations. Being acclaimed isn't something that happens every day, so it's a testament to the kind of work that you're doing to help us reconcile, the collaboration, the efforts, the engagement, the availability, your access has been something that I know that we've all appreciated, and I do believe that it is not only beneficial but helpful in the long term to have someone that offers the continuity and the ability to be able to reasonably deal in a manner that, you know, is understandable and helps us get to where we need to be in a good way. So, having said that, I want to congratulate you, and thank you. And the question would be, you know, providing the report that's been addressed this morning, obviously, the work that you've been doing with the region and other municipalities, what other elements can we expect to be able to collaborate on?
Our focus, you know, we've been, I think, doing a great deal, particularly since the Truth and Reconciliation Report, we've been doing a great deal to connect as communities just in terms of cross-cultural understanding and cultural education. So that's an ongoing project that I think needs to continue. Sandra's mentioned that healthcare and services aren't included in the scope of the report, and I think that that's something that deserves attention at some point as well, but what we're seeing right now is a huge push for building homes faster, and the infrastructure to support that, and we want to make sure that we have a voice in all of this that is ongoing, and really have not only a voice, but an opportunity to engage in what I would call economic reconciliation. It is, reconciliation's a funny word, I mean, why do we need to reconcile? In this part of southern Ontario, I can say, as someone who's negotiated the Williams Treaties, we were told we didn't have any land rights or harvesting rights in this area of southern Ontario for over 90 years, and when we negotiated that in 2018 and came to a final settlement agreement, it, I think it's shocked people a little bit, because now they're realizing, oh, wait, these people have rights now, and what does that mean functionally on the ground? It means that, you know, we were pushed aside for settlement, development, sports, fisheries, you name it, and put onto reservations, and that is, you know, accidents of history or non-accidents of history that have occurred and that we're contending with. But I think what's really important to remember is that we need to prosper as communities, and I think the reconciliation agenda has woken people, has woke people up to the fact that not only were our people treated horribly in history, but we need to be decision-makers at the economic development tables that are ongoing right now, given all the development that's being proposed, and things like Bill Five that have come out. We need a meaningful voice. When I look at all the regional development that's ongoing or that's being proposed, it is like feeding from a fire hose, and so our community needs to be at the table, not only to benefit economically, but to provide, I don't want to say a sober second thought, that sounds a bit cliche, but to provide a bit of a check and balance on responsible development, and the fact that we're land stewards, I think, provides that voice in a way that is unique and much-needed. And we're seeing that from the support of the mainstream more and more every day. They want our voice at the table, and so I'm excited to engage in economic development projects and having our people have a voice at those tables right now, because I feel it's very timely. But going forward, more in the health sector and the services sector, I'd like to get more involved with the, with police and enforcement issues and opportunities that concern our community as well. So we've been working with the RPS, but really just scratched the surface. I'd like to see more done in that regard, too, and I think I have the support there of those leaders as well. So I hope I've answered your question, it's a bit of a meandering answer.
No, no, I appreciate it through you, Chair. The question was not just answered, but comprehensive in the work that we do, because I think the biggest apprehension that some may have is when the response will come, whether it's collaborative and whether it's reasonable, because there's obviously a timely pressure on a lot of the things that are dealt with when it comes to development, but you've been very good at being intelligent and timely in being able to help address whether you're talking about policing issues or development issues. I know that through you, Chair, I've looked and I've seen some reports out of B.C. and Vancouver, the kind of housing projects that the indigenous community and First Nations have taken on. Super exciting, because it's not been the kind of thing that the average person would consider to be the norm or the expectation. It's actually transcended that, and it's been very positive to the tune of thousands of units that have been provided to urban communities as a result of that partnership. So, having said that, I guess, you know, noting, you've got the best name going, Chief LaRocca, like, that's a proper and fundamental name to be able to champion a lot of the initiatives, but I also think that you've got a great deal of goodwill, and your work is something through you, Chair, that we appreciate with our departments, cities, and the people involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation, thank you for bringing this forward today. Just my thoughts right now are surrounding, to follow up on what Counselor Lee had brought up in terms of adding to this. And right now, when I look around the room, I see representatives from lower-tier governments and upper-tier governments, but it's all municipal government. And I would like to think that in the adage of, you know, the Wampe Belt and keeping these canoes in parallel and not bumping into each other, I think it would be a good time to add all of those signatories together, so that we can all paddle these waterways together. And I think that together, as municipal government, both upper and lower tier, it would be responsible for us to be parties to the same agreement. What do you think, Director, or Chief?
Thank you, Counselor McDougal, and through the chair. When we embarked on this, our kind of starting point was to start small and grow. We didn't anticipate that this would be all-encompassing, including, you know, all services. We wanted to start with what was most critical to community and to us. And the thought at the time was, yes, you're here as representatives of local area municipalities, but you're all here as regional councillors. And so the idea was that it would be between the region and MSIFN. However, the way the conversation is unfolding this morning, personally, I would be very pleased to have any municipalities who are interested in becoming signatories to do so. I wanted to be cautious that we weren't in a situation where if there were parties who opted not to participate, that we would not have to stop. We wanted to advance regional work. But certainly, if there are municipalities that would like to participate, personally, I don't have any objections, but as the other party to the agreement, I would defer to Chief LaRocca.
Thank you, Sandra. That is exactly the reason it was negotiated in the way it was, or worked out in the way it was, was we thought if we can have regional council approve the sign-on and build those relationships and build the comfort with the agreement over time, that perhaps it could blossom into something with each of the regional, or of the sub-governments, I don't want to say sub-governments, but sorry, pardon me, I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way, but all of the governments that form part of the region, if they signed on over time, maybe that would be the way. I just didn't want it to stop up the good work that we had achieved, and I felt like we could engage with the region on a government-to-government basis, and that it wouldn't get in the way of our other government-to-government relationships with the upper and lower tier of municipalities.
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you, Chief LaRocca. And just, sorry, I'm looking at my screen, which I don't want to forget, which is the canoe, the Nankuan, coming up, but thinking already that we already know that there's going to be this many canoes in the water, I think it might be prudent for us, and given that we're all part of municipal government, might be prudent for us to look at that exercise now. And I do want to follow up on my fellow councillor's comments in terms of you having the best name ever, I mean, we need a story about the Martin before you go, so that the Martins, if you're from the Martin clan, then they can take down a moose. So even more important than the power of your last name, but I personally think, and I'm hopeful that maybe others around the room would like to see that, perhaps we could come at this as a community endeavor and, you know, seek reconciliation as a group rather than through our individual silos. Through you, Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Chair Henry, through you. Just a couple of comments, and first, I'd like to commend Counselor McDougal for his comments, he was reading my mind. Yes, I view this as the beginning, and I can assure you with my fellow councillors, this is something that we will look at in our community as we continue to build our relationship with you. I do think it's important that we give this first agreement opportunity to breathe and to grow and to strengthen, and to keep those canoes, you know, on the right path, so well done, Ian. Makes me happy to hear things like that. Just a comment, we've talked, or you've talked about the economic development portion, the partnership portion, but we haven't really touched on the arts and culture and why that is also so vital to your community and to educate the rest of our communities on the value that preservation and education and expansion of culture and arts is vital to all communities and how art benefits. So I just wanted to make sure, we took note of 3.2.2 of the agreement and how it's inherent into what I think the spirit of this agreement is also trying to bring, and that is a form of reconciliation as well. And when you were showing your initial presentation, Sandra, when you had the slide up about the awareness walk with Nile McGeezy-Johnson, just a comment for those who may not know, on Monday, the city pickering awarded Nile with his first Arts and Culture Award for McGeezy Saves the World, which was a piece that he installed in Pickering, and it was his first time being awarded. Any recognition for the pieces that he brings, and he brings them with the intention to educate, it's not just something to beautify his space, it's placemaking, it's education, and I just call that out as a very important section of this agreement to not lose sight of in the economics and partnership portion. Thank you for allowing me those comments.
So, members of council, that exhausts the speaker list. Chief LaRocca, I value your leadership and the work that you do. I'd like to thank you and the Mississaugas for your charitable work that goes throughout the region. I'd like to say that I value the times that we've spent together, whether it was in this chamber when I was sworn in, or whether I'm in your chambers when we have conversations on big-picture items and going forward. Members of council, this is the first steps in a journey that we will walk together, and I thank you for being here today. To Sandra and the team that put this together, I want to say thank you. Members of council, it would be appropriate if we altered the agenda to bring this item forward, so that we could deal with it while Chief LaRocca is here in the chambers. So Mayor Carter, I'm going to make the assumption that you're moving that.
You're assuming correct, sir.
Counselor Wu, on the second. So, members of council, that alters the agenda, we'll call the vote to bring item 7.1 forward now.
Recorded vote at the appropriate time, sir.
All those in favor? Recorded vote, please, all those in favor? On bringing the item forward, yes? Or do you just want on the motion? Okay, so on altering the agenda and bringing the item forward, all those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. The item is now on the floor, Mr. Clerk? So a move by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Wu. The item is now on the floor. This is the government-to-government collaboration between the Mississaugas of Skugog Island and First Nation and the region of Durham. Speakers, Mayor Carter.
Just a recorded vote at the appropriate time, sir. A move for endorsement.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wu.
Yeah, and through the chair, and thank you, Sandra, and thank you, Chief LaRocca, for the presentation. And now we're dealing with the report, and it was, well, if I could speak to the presentation too a little bit, because again, Chief LaRocca, you brought forward, and it was one of those, I think it was fate, what you spoke about, what could have been part of the Wampe, the two lines, and the autonomy, but we're trying to work together, we're trying to collaborate, and I look at that as two rivers, and rowing in the same direction, rather than rowing in opposite directions. And I think this collaboration, this partnership, and as you mentioned, right behind you with the Durham Regional Police Services, trying to do the same thing as working in partnership with the community and building the trust, I think that's very important. I look here on the report, 3.2.2, facilitating clean energy development. Could we not put in there clean water, clean air? Because I think that's very, very important if we're looking at the foundation of healthy and well-being. That's the lifeblood. So if that's something that could be put in there. Also... Also, we talk about First Nation procurement, and my good friend will be coming forward with a motion later about establishing social procurement practices. Now, in the past, have we looked at procurement and looking at First Nations? And maybe I could drag that to Sandra.
Certainly, Counselor Wu, I was waiting for the red light and through the Chair. Yeah, so I'll speak to the first part with respect to clean energy development, and I will say that the focus here so far has been, and very appropriate to you, is that Durham is the clean energy capital of Canada and home to two nuclear generating power stations, in case you did not know. We were very pleased to recently support and attend the First Nations Major Projects Coalition Conference, which was, had heavy, heavy involvement from Clean Energy Industries, OPG being a strong partner and having an entire Indigenous consultation team. We're feeling that there is quite a bit of work that can be done in this space. But you're absolutely right in terms of clean water and clean air. As you hear from us all the time, sustainability, it's all interrelated, it's all connected, and we take that all together. The piece around procurement, thank you very much. It was, I'll tell you that it was a key point of discussion internally. There is, currently, our procurement practices are so transparent, open, and straightforward, but you have to know where to look for the information. You have to register for the bids and tenders, and then you get all access to all of the region's tender documents that are posted. So what we, the approach we have taken is to identify whether there are any perceived or real barriers that we might want to address. So far, not so much, but there are opportunities where we can strengthen. And so certainly, I spoke in the presentation about the business showcase, which specifically invites companies, rather than cold-calling regional employees, we get those a lot, invites companies to come and make presentations, and area municipalities are at the table so we can hear directly. And is there an opportunity to have one that is specific to First Nations Indigenous business? Probably. And that would give us a good pathway to hear specifically from businesses. But yes, we have identified procurement as an area where we want to look. Currently, there's nothing within our existing structures or bylaws that necessarily needs to change, as they are very clear and transparent.
Okay. And as a follow-up to that, I had the opportunity to attend one, and there are others, but the Canadian Aboriginal and Minority Supplier Council, CAMC. And then, just looking online, KMBM Indigenous Professional Services, which is out of Curb Lake. And would it not be advantageous to look at this, and if they qualify, don't get me wrong, to be able to, and if I'm looking at funding, and there will be another report, if we're looking at federal funding, that is always, always an asset when we're looking at upper levels of government funding. And are you familiar with these, the two that I mentioned, and there's probably more? I think we did have somebody present at FCA at one time that spoke about this.
Through the Chair to the Counselor, yes. Yes, we are aware, and yes, it's prudent to explore. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Begwich.
Counselor McDougal.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much again. Knowing that there's members of this room who have interest in possibly being signatories to such a, let's call it a navigable map, as to how to paddle our canoes, I personally would like to make a motion to defer this back to staff to explore with the lower tiers as to how they might be part and how we can all work together on such an agreement.
So, Counselor McDougal, the Clerk has informed me that they have a drafted amendment. Mr. Clerk, can you put it up, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Counselor McDougal, please let us know if this gets to the crux of the matter and might assist in the discussion.
It does accept, I would like to see the lower tiers engaged prior to the region signing.
Then that would be a referral back to staff on this direction only, correct, Mr. Chair? Oh, we refer it all back. I would prefer to see this amendment and we move forward today, but I need, this has been proposed, you have the floor, would you like to move this amendment? And before you move the amendment, Chief LaRocca, would you be comfortable with this amendment?
Personally, I think we can go ahead today with respect, Regional Chair, and if we want to enable the prospect of upper and lower tier municipalities signing on to similar arrangements in the future, then I would welcome that.
So, thank you, Chief. So, Counselor McDougal, would you like to move the amendment?
I will move that amendment.
Okay, I'm looking for a second. Seconded by Counselor Anderson. The amendment's on the floor. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the amendment? Okay. Counselor Anderson, you're first. You were going to speak to the main motion? Sorry.
Yeah, I was, and part of what I was going to talk about was what the amendment alluded to. So I see in the agreement, there's a work plan. Is there an opportunity for the lower tier to engage in? That's what I was going to suggest, that could be a solution to that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. That is the direction, Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure I can support this amendment, though I understand the images behind it. I think, you know, both staff and Chief LaRocca have said very plainly that they want to see how this works first. This is brand new. This is something that took months, I'm assuming months, if not longer, to negotiate, and they want to see the efficacy of it. They want to see kind of how it kind of plays out first before we start opening up to the lower tiers. I absolutely think Ajax, for example, would love to engage in these kind of agreements, but let's see this proof of concept first to make sure that this agreement works before we start introducing other elements. So, you know, I appreciate the idea behind it, but I don't think I can support the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to follow up with Counselor Lee's comments, but I think I've got a different spin. I agree with the desire and the need for us to move forward with the agreement at Durham Region. I agree that the lower-tier municipalities need to be engaged. The engagement, I don't see a specific date on this, so will we have the time to see how the agreement works out to accommodate all of the concerns that Chief LaRocca and Sandra identified and looking for answers to those? So I think this will accommodate everything. And in the case of Clarrington, I don't know that we are ready now, we are working on it, for more in-depth engagement. There are some resources that we need to put in place that I don't believe are quite there yet. And I would hate Clarrington to be slowing something down, but would like to be at the table and would like to learn as we see this agreement. So I guess the easy question is, we're not going to try to rush this through. We're going to allow the agreement. Hopefully, we're going to vote to support the agreement, but does Sandra and Chief LaRocca, do they see this as something? It's very much a living document that municipalities will be able to learn from with the amendment.
Sandra?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Foster. I support Chief LaRocca's indication that it would be beneficial to proceed with what we have today and certainly carve out the intent was to engage with municipalities on the work plan, which we fully intend to do. And I'll give you a very concrete example of where that work is already underway. Since we're talking about economic development, working with the Durham Region Economic Development Partnership and Task Force, Mississaugas of Skogog Island First Nation have already been invited to join that table. So we're all local area municipalities are currently members as well as local post-secondary institutions. So having those open conversations with area municipalities about economic development potential is already happening. So I think...
Sorry, but so what I'm hearing is this amendment is simply articulating what you were planning on doing anyway, right?
My view is that the amendment is not needed, as we're already engaging with area municipalities.
It may not be bad to articulate it, but if we're doing it anyway and just articulating it clearly, may not be a bad thing to do. But again, I did not want to slow down the good work that's been done so far by both yourself and your team and Chief LaRocca and her team. Thank you ever so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Wu.
Just to follow up to Mayor Foster, and I did want to just say that we're already engaged with the program manager Indigenous implementation from the region already. And this is a step forward. Again, this is a long-term relationship, you know, in any relationship, and we're learning as we go along. So again, this is all about reconciliation and cooperation, and we in Clarrington are headed in lockstep. So that's just what I want to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Roy.
Hi, and good morning, and I just want to send my regrets, just that I'm actually here with our social services team for our AFSA conference. But the, listening to even just the presentation this morning, the talk about the next steps with Health and Social Services, first and foremost, I just want to express that willingness to do those next steps is welcome, and I would look forward to having that conversation with Chief LaRocca as well, too. Second, while this amendment is sitting in front of us, I think it's a great start that this presentation from today and the report is that we move forward and we allow for the process to move forward. Knowing the work that's being done with our economic development departments and staff as well, too, at the local municipalities, we have to start somewhere. And as Sandra has identified, that start has started with today, and the moving forward, we will all be a part of that work plan. So, well, the wording is what it is. I can't support what's in front of us. I would rather support that we move forward with the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Brenner.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make it real simple. The amendment's not necessary. The report clearly articulates in the recommendations that it's going to be forwarded to lower-tier municipalities. The municipalities will all have the opportunity, just like the City of Pickering, who I know will take up the opportunity, to engage in further dialogue. Mr. Chairman, this is redundant, not necessary. Call the question.
Well, so you've already spoken to it, so you cannot call the question, but you were also the last speaker. Wait a second. There is no more speakers. Mayor Carter, if yours is just to call a recorded vote on the amendment. On both. Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, on the amendment, I'll call a recorded vote now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the amendment to the main motion is starting now.
Okay, so the amendment loses. Members of Council, we'll move on to the main motion. I'm going, the recorded vote has been called. Mr. Clerk, if you could call that vote now, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote on the main motion is starting now.
The main, the item is unanimous by all members present in the chambers. Thank you for joining us today, Chief LaRocca. I wish you a wonderful day. Members of Council, before we get into the next presentation, some of us started at 8:45 this morning. I'm going to suggest a 15-minute break. Moved by Counselor Kerr, seconded by Counselor Wu on a 15-minute break. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Two, that carries. That carries.
Thank you.
If you could please take your seat. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. I am 15, and we have members online. Okay. So, members of council, I will call this meeting back to order. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Clerk, we have quorum. Members of council, next item on the agenda is item 4.2. Mayor Collier, Chair of the Durham Regional Police Services Board and Chief Murrera, Chief of Durham Regional Police, on their quarterly update to council. Mayor Collier, if you'd like to do the opening, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. It is still morning. Chair Henry, colleagues, I'm pleased to be here, Chief Murrera, to provide you with our quarterly update. It's a board priority to increase its visibility and outreach to the community groups and elected officials across the region. The purpose of this engagement is to ensure that the community's views are represented in policing priorities and support accountability to help foster even higher levels of trust in the DRPS and lead to an even safer community. We'll be visiting all of local councils again this year before the end of the year, and we're also sitting down with local MPPs to discuss issues related to community safety in Durham. Board representatives recently met with Durham CAS, the Community Development Council of Durham, and the region's Anti-Racism Task Force Subcommittee on Policing to hear their perspective, build partnerships in making Durham safe. We'll continue these efforts to have meaningful exchanges about priorities, challenges, and collaboration. Switch gears a little bit on the collective bargaining front. The Board and Durham Regional Police Association recently agreed to renew the collective agreements with members for five years until 2029. This agreement very closely resembles the salaries of other police organizations in large cities in Ontario, and we're able to make changes that will curb future costs in areas like WSIB. We have a strong relationship with the association, and this will support a productive and healthy workforce that delivers excellent service across the region of Durham. At last month's board meeting, we received a report from the Service on the Implementation of the Community Safety and Policing Act, which came into force a little more than a year ago. The report highlighted the operational impact and costs of the legislation, especially in areas of equipment and training, as well as leadership capacity and supervision. The Service is currently in the procurement stage for obtaining new equipment mandated by the new act, such as body-worn armor, ballistic shields, firearms, and other specialized equipment at a cost of over $900,000. The impacts on training are still being assessed and will involve new staff and infrastructure that we know will have significant cost implications. There's also a new regulation under the act on adequate and effective policing, which includes a standard to assess the quality of policing being delivered. This new standard will guide activities, investments, and measurements of policing across Durham region. I'll now turn it over to Chief Murrera to provide the DRPS operational update. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Chair Henry, members of regional council. It seems like I was just here on the first quarterly update of 2025, but when it comes to community safety, I seize upon any opportunity to discuss with our elected officials in our community. As part of my and our police service board and services commitment to community safety, modernization, and enhanced strategic partnerships, we are making changes to divisional oversight at our five divisions. As a result of our recent organizational review regarding span of control, we wanted to ensure that the senior leadership provided strategic supervision over the divisions that are providing direct frontline service to our community. I want to point out that Durham region is not a monolith. Each division has a unique set of needs and oversight, and understanding those distinct elements helps enhance our ability to deliver service. Each division, under the command leadership of Deputy Chief Kim Yendell, will now have a superintendent assigned to oversee the work and support the divisional inspectors. These changes just took place May 12th. 19 Division, or West Division, it covers Ajax Pickering, will be managed now by Superintendent Steph Finatieri and Inspector David Palmer. Central West, or 18, Whitby and North Ashway, will be Superintendent Rob Antea and Inspector Leanne Everson. 17 Division, or 17 East, Central East Division in Ashway, will be Superintendent James Lamoth and Acting Inspector Jeff Hoover. 16, or East Division in Clarington and part of Ashway, will be Superintendent Sean Sidderam and Inspector Craig McCabe. 15 Division will share the superintendent, Sean Sidderam, but will have Inspector Chris Boylow, who will be the acting inspector in 15. This gives us an opportunity here to enhance supervision, oversight, and service delivery. Our superintendents and inspectors, if they haven't already, will embark on connecting with you, our elected officials and community leaders and stakeholders, to introduce themselves and develop relationships that are essential as we collectively support our community safety goals. Additionally, we have changed the mandate of our community response units or crew units to be engaged in more long-term problem-solving at the divisional levels. This better connects us with the communities we serve and looks at problem-solving through a collaborative lens that also accounts for systemic issues that are at the core of many of the issues that we face. On a side note, I just want to update you on the recruitment processes, as we are on target to meet our goal of hiring 100 and percent of all vehicles stolen. While we have seen success in what amounts to a three-person team pulled from other areas to create Project Attire, the number of auto thefts, which is more than two a day, is just not acceptable. It is why we are planning on establishing a full-time dedicated unit and resourcing them in part of our next year's growth. On March twenty-seventh, we held a press conference to provide an update regarding Project Carbon, an investigation that began in twenty, this year, in January of 2025, targeting organized crime auto thefts in our region. Eleven suspects were arrested and faced more than one hundred and sixty charges. Eight of the eleven suspects charged are facing fifty-eight charges for brazenly ignoring or violating previous release orders and conditions, highlighting a serious problem with our bail system. One of the females that was arrested breaching her conditions was, the same day she was released, is now wanted by our service. She was arrested in Peel Region for separate auto theft offenses. All eleven suspects reside in Quebec and traveled to Durham Region where they stole vehicles and transported them back to Quebec. So far, twenty vehicles have been recovered and eighteen remain outstanding. Three suspects also remain outstanding. This investigation was supported by Ontario's Preventing Auto Thefts, or PATS, grant by the provincial government and Associate Minister Zee Hamid, Solicitor General for Auto Thefts and Bail Reform, was in attendance at the press conference to show the ministry's result, support. And obviously, our local MP, MPP, Lauren Coe was also present. Do we have the video? I want to, I want to show you this video here because we're not just talking about, people equate this to property crime. Is it, can you pause it just for a second? No? Can you go back? Oh, there you go. So, people think that this is just property crime, and it's not. This is organized crime, and it's very, very dangerous. And I want to apologize for the, the quality of this video. This isn't one of our cameras. This is a part of the surveillance camera. But you're going to see one of our plainclothes officers who's invest, part of the original investigation of these stolen cars, is actually on a different assignment. He is actually on his way to do something, attending a different, investigating a different call. When he sees a female suspect who's involved in this, who is wanted in the parking lot, and he, she, he knows he's, she is wanted and tries to make an arrest. And I want to show you what happens in this video here. Focus on the white car in the middle. Police officer is approaching her. Places are under arrest. Door opens, and that's our police officer being knocked to the ground. He strikes another car in the parking lot and takes off. So you can see just how serious these cases are and the level of violence that is used against our police officers, and how this endangers the public. And this is why we have to take auto thefts very, very seriously, because it goes far beyond just the property crime. Chair Henry, I know exactly what you're thinking after previous two slides. One of the topics that comes up in my quarterly presentation is related to those external challenges that impact demands on our service and public safety. I was recently a panel member as part of the Ontario Associations of Chiefs of the Police Blue Line Discussion related to the safety of our communities and our officers in light of bail reform and recidivism. And I shared a very strong and unapologetic remarks. The fact is, Bill C-75 was legislation that bluntly has not made us any safer here in our region or right across the province. In Durham, we have seen violent crime reoffenders rates double since that bill was introduced. We, when we generalize about the complex issues and populations to inform policy and legislation, the most complex issues are often the ones that fall through the cracks, the ones that make the news, the ones that endanger people, and disproportionately also affect those who are experiencing these challenges. When mental health and addiction hospitals and centers were closed to focus on community services, it made sense for the vast majority of people, but again, failed to meet the most complex mental health and addiction needs of those who pose the greatest risk to themselves and to our communities. Same goes for Bill C-75. When we look at criminals without difference or an understanding of those who put our community and our officers at greatest risk, we are dealing with a violent minority of people, a defiant violent minority, who are emboldened when they see the administration of justice just doesn't matter. Seventy-three percent of all of the administration of justice charges that we lay are withdrawn by the Crown Attorneys, and that is the fail to comply, the fail to appear, the, you know, just not complying with conditions. So courts are giving people, releasing people on bail conditions, and seventy-three percent of the time, it means nothing. And so this emboldens the criminal element. In Durham, we have an individual whose criminal record dates back to 2014. Since that time, he has been convicted of thirty-nine criminal code offenses, including assault with a weapon, assault caused bodily harm, assaulting a police officer, and a number of weapons offenses, amongst other convictions. In total, he has been released on bail five times and has failed to comply with his bail conditions at least four times and violated a probation order at least ten times. He has committed two very serious assaults while on release, including assaulting an intimate partner on four occasions while on release for assaulting that intimate partner. And we think about the rise of intimate partner violence. This is a contributing factor. How can any member of the public, any reasonable person who look at this fact scenario in the bail laws, say that we are maintaining respect for the administration of justice? And this formed part of my remarks that I gave. We recently participated, as well, on another note here, in the Ontario Police Memorial to honor officers who were heroes in life and not death and made the ultimate sacrifice for their communities. We had the largest turnout in our history. Over a hundred and eighty members of this organization attended that and delivered a very strong message to our communities and our policing partners there, that we are here to honor the families of those who paid a very heavy price. I want to address some of the trends because it obviously will form part of future budget discussions. In the first four months of the year, our citizen-generated calls for service are slightly lower than the same period last year, but higher than 2022 and 23. Calls were up by more than twelve hundred in March and April, when I compare that to January and February. So we're trending up. And our emergency services times year-to-date is similar to 2024. We're two seconds longer to be dispatched to calls, but our current emergency response time is forty seconds longer than just in 2023. Part of that can be attributed to our time on scene, which is up fifteen minutes compared to the same time in 2024. Policing continues to evolve, and there's more and more regulatory requirements for officers. And in addition to that, and I've spoken to council about this, investments that we're making in the previous years, it takes the officers just that much longer to get up to speed, just over a year to really start contributing. And, you know, with that inexperience on the road, being very junior, we're requiring to spend more time to get the call right the first time. Time on scene for emergency calls since 2022 has risen by twenty-two minutes. That might not seem like a huge number on the surface, but I'm going to explain why we look at this from an operational lens. Our median emergency response time has gone up by one minute since 2022. And we need to ask ourselves, is this the trend that we want? When we look at officers going from call to call to call, more time on scene impacts our proactive policing time and goes back to something I discussed earlier. On a side note on this, can we just go back slide? I talked about how, you know, we received fewer calls, about eighteen hundred calls, less than we did the year before. Most municipalities are hovering around where they were. They're either plus or minus twenty calls, essentially. Ashway has seen a decrease of over fifteen hundred calls. And when we look at that, and we look at where those calls, where we have fewer of those calls, it's in the downtown core. And one of the things, when we, when I first arrived here and I noticed that, you know, some of our crew units, and this is why it's important, I'm going to tie it back to an investment that this regional council allowed me to make, and that is, our crew units weren't properly staffed. We only had a handful of people. Because we've been able to put more resources in there and be in the right places at the right times and using the data to help deploy, the fact that the city of Ashway also has a very robust security team, you know, really a whole-of-city approach to dealing with many of the issues, we have seen a steady decrease in the calls for service in that, in that one area there. And I, I'm not telling you there's a causation. I'm just, I'm just simply saying we're noticing this correlation here between investing in resources and a proactive capacity and the impact on calls for service. And what calls for service are we seeing fewer? Check on the well-being, unwanted person, assist ambulance, and just the general disturbance. This is very, very positive. Having more officers in a proactive role, being seen by the community and being a resource, and having the city provide those levels of support to the, the officers and working in a partner, a true partnership, has really contributed to a market decrease in the number of calls for service in the downtown core. And it's something I think is important for all regional council to know, that these investments are having an impact. And this is why we are building out all of our crew units right across the region, because we want to see the same decrease in calls for service and better outcomes for our communities, period. Thank you, Chris. Less proactive policing impacts those actions that help remove crime guns from someone and prevent someone from being killed or injured. It also catches impaired drivers before they hurt somebody. As you can see here, our crime gun seizures have dropped each year while our shootings have gone up. The investment this council made in staffing for the 2024 budget will start to come into fruition, and investments in the 2025 budget for frontline officers will have future impacts. So we are beginning to, to address tomorrow's issues by making these important investments today, and we're going to have to continue to do this, particularly as our region continues to grow. And I hope to report to this council about where those, how those investments are paying off, what the outcomes are. And of course, there's always the challenge here with regards to making the investments around specialized training and equipment, given our new Community Safety and Policing Act and the new requirements that are put on, on the police. Next slide, Chris? And just a quick update on our hate crime unit. Detective Constable Sarah Porter is now in place for a full-time hate crimes unit that was supported by the board and, and of course, this regional council in the 2025 budget. That team is, is expected to be fully up and running by July of this year, in just a few months. We recently hosted a Countering Hate and Violent Extremism Conference right here in our region, inviting partner agencies from across the GTA. The conference was designed to inform our key partners on possible indicators of crime or extremist activities and practices that might otherwise go unnoticed and unreported. In 2024, our members responded to one hundred and thirteen hate-motivated crimes and incidents, nearly double the fifty-seven we attended in 2023. And just yesterday, we hosted a group from the Canadian Race Relations Foundation to discuss how we can better work together to inform our communities and our officers on how we're combating hate crime. All of this is designed to build trust with our communities. I should also add, important investments in our Equity and Inclusion Unit meant that they are now a seat at the table, and it's a whole-of-service approach to combating hate crime, not just in the criminal sense of investigating hate crimes when they occur, but also to better support communities and prevent these crimes from happening in the first place, the outreach that needs to be done in schools and other institutions where we have an impact and an influence on educating particularly our young people. As of April fifteenth of this year, our officers have responded to twenty-nine hate-motivated crimes and incidents. At this time last year, we had twenty-seven reports, so we continue to tick up. Looking at the last two years, we've seen a spike in hate-motivated crimes, usually in May. The vast majority of these incidents involve hate or bias against the victim's religion, race, or ethnicity. But we also know this is underreported. So as our capacity grows and our community becomes better educated, we can expect to see more of these crimes reported. It's not that more are occurring necessarily. It's just that people feel that they can report it. In 2024, we launched a hate crime dashboard for our members in order to better capture, display, and analyze hate crime-related data in a timely manner and also help officers as a resource for their deployment and investigations. Our intimate partner violence and incidents continue to be a major concern. And as I mentioned at the end of last year, eight of the ten homicide victims were women. We have an average of about eighty-five intimate partner violence incidents each month, and that figure continues to grow. For mental health calls, there's been just under eighteen hundred mental health-related calls for service, where that is the specific reason we're there, and about eleven hundred and fifty mental health apprehensions, and about eighteen hundred hours spent at hospital waiting for the admission of somebody who's been apprehended under the Mental Health Act. I'm almost done. The number of collisions in Durham Region went up in the first two months of 2025, exceeding one thousand for each month, but has since dropped off in March and April to the mid-eight hundred incidents per month. This is statistically identical to the same period in 2024, and we've had eight fatalities this year, and five were pedestrians. One of the fatalities was related to a snowmobile accident. We've had two hundred and forty-two impaired driving incidents so far this year, and the last ninety days are impaired. Driving collision rate is about three percent of all of those collisions. We've recently had a number of motorcycle accidents in, in the region, and DRPS is launching a motorcycle safety awareness campaign. Additionally, we have seen a number of pedestrian accidents through Durham Vision Zero. We will determine if there's any specific education or strategies to address this growing concern. Chair Henry, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you or council may have.
Thank you, Chief. There are a number of councillors with questions. We'll start with councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I know, shocking that I have questions. The Countering Hate Conference
and it's a whole of service approach to combating hate crime, not just in the criminal sense of investigating hate crimes when they occur, but also to better support communities and prevent these crimes from happening in the first place. The outreach that needs to be done in schools and other institutions where we have an impact and an influence on educating particularly our young people. As of April fifteenth of this year, our officers have responded to twenty-nine hate motivated crimes and incidents. At this time last year, we had twenty-seven reports, so we continue to tick up. Looking at the last two years, we've seen a spike in hate motivated crimes usually in May. The vast majority of these incidents involve hate or bias against the victim's religion, race, or ethnicity. But we also know this is under reported. So as our capacity grows and our community becomes better educated, we can expect to see more of these crimes reported. It's not that more are occurring necessarily, it's just that people feel that they can report it. In twenty twenty-four, we launched a hate crime dashboard for our members in order to better capture, display, and analyze hate crime related data in a timely manner and also help officers as a resource for their deployment and investigations. Our intimate partner violence incidents continue to be a major concern. And as I mentioned at the end of last year, eight of the ten homicide victims were women. We have an average of about eighty-five intimate partner violence incidents each month, and that figure continues to grow. For mental health calls, there's been just under eighteen hundred mental health related calls for service where that is the specific reason we're there and about eleven hundred and fifty mental health apprehensions and about eighteen hundred hours spent at hospital waiting for the admission of somebody who's been apprehended under the Mental Health Act. I'm almost done. The number of collisions in Durham region went up in the first two months of twenty twenty-five, exceeding one thousand for each month, but have since dropped off in March and April to the mid-eight hundred incidents per month. This is statistically identical to the same period in twenty twenty-four. And we've had eight fatalities this year and five were pedestrians. One of the fatalities was related to a snowmobile accident. We've had two hundred and forty-two impaired driving incidents so far this year. And the last ninety days are impaired driving collision rate is about three percent of all of those collisions. We've recently had a number of motorcycle accidents in, and in the region. And DRPS is launching a motorcycle safety awareness campaign. Additionally, we have seen a number of pedestrian accidents through Durham Vision Zero. We will determine if there's any specific education or strategies to address this growing concern. Chair Henry, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you or council may have.
Thank you, Chief. There are a number of counselors with questions. We'll start with Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I know, shocking that I have questions. The Countering Hate Conference, when was this? And would this have been open to all community organizations in Durham or just kind of like police forces?
No, Paramedic Services was also invited, I believe, the fire services. There was a number of community, I call them community partners, but a number of different agencies that deliver community services where we shared that information, including all of our partner agencies. So York, Toronto, Peel, officers also attended.
But mainly it was a public service kind of?
Yeah, it's really geared towards the strategies to investigate and detect. So we don't really want that to get out. But we also recognize that our partner agencies are often placed in the right places to notice these things and to better inform us.
No, a hundred percent. So thank you for clarifying on that. So just to clarify, the timeline of the hate crime unit is July twenty twenty-five. Is that going to be based out of a specific location?
So I'll say this, hate crime unit exists today.
Sure.
And we've always had a hate crime component, but it really was done off the end of someone's desk, to borrow an expression. We have dedicated these resources today. By July, we will be fully up and running. We are in the process right now of also hiring an analyst that will help us better review all of our occurrences to see if there is elements of hate or bias in any occurrence that we have. And so we're going to continue to, to invest and build this. But we're, we're working with the Canadian Race Relations Foundation to make sure that we are not repeating the mistakes that some other organizations have made. And more importantly, to identify those best practices that puts us in a position to, to be successful right out of the gate.
So, but in terms of location, are they based out of that office or?
No, they're based out of our Intelligence Bureau right now. And by the time we get up and running, this unit will be responsible for being the case manager for all of them. The, the other thing that we're doing, and I appreciate the opportunity to answer this, is not just one unit's responsibility. Everyone is responsible for it. So part of what they're doing, and they've already begun to, they've been at every single shift now, right across the region twice, delivering and reinforcing our governance around investigating hate crimes are, because we've been able, again, through regional council support of beginning to build out our Criminal Investigations bureaus that now follow every single shift, they're developing that expertise for these investigators that are available twenty-four hours a day at every single one of our buildings that will better deliver service when these incidents are happening and also working with our Equity and Inclusion Unit to deliver the outreach, to make sure that we are hitting the right groups and that we are delivering the right kind of information. We're working closely, again, with our community response units that we're building out to deliver that message and be, and build those relationships day to day before something happens.
What's the total complement then for this unit? Is it three analysts plus four people, analysts plus two?
So, so there'd be three investigators, an analyst, and there is a detective who's in charge of?
So five, we'll call it then.
Yeah.
Approximately, great. And then you mentioned the Canadian Centre for Base Relations, I believe.
Yes.
Are you, are they kind of sharing best practices from like other police forces, like the OPP, RCMP?
Yes, that's right. That's right. They, they are and they're working closely. And in fact, they, they, they're incredible partners, I'll just say. And they're making their staff available to meet with our staff, actually spend a week here with us coming up really shortly to, to, to help us, to just make sure and review and provide that support.
Okay, and then you had mentioned the courts previously. So regarding this hate unit, is there like a standard in how you deal with the courts for hate crimes? Is there a special with the Attorney General, I think, or whoever the equivalent is?
Yeah, there, there are provisions within the Criminal Code, which is a federal statute, of course, that require the Attorney General's consent, the provincial Attorney General. But the majority of cases that we are dealing with involve hate motivation, which means that there's a substantive criminal charge there. Think of the swastika on offense. That is a mischief at its core that is motivated by hate because it's a hate symbol. And, and so I wouldn't need the Attorney General's consent. I would collect that information and speak to the attorney, to the Crown Attorneys here and make sure that they are aware of it. And this unit will develop those relationships with the, the Crown Attorneys that are experts in this within our courthouse here. So that, that evidence can be brought forward at the appropriate time. Hate, hate speech and others require the Attorney General's consent in order to lay that charge. And we have already begun those conversations with our Crown Attorneys, actually some time ago, and, and developing those experts within their organization that will help us facilitate those investigations as quickly as we can.
Right, I could say an example would be the Ajax library attack where we weren't able to charge her with a hate crime because that was up to the attorneys. So in this case, we are built, I'm sorry, do you want to?
Yeah, no, I was going to say we, but in that case there, there is no hate crime charge. It's hate motivated and then there are specific hate related offenses like calling for the genocide of an entire group, you know, like there, there's hate speech that, that, that happens. That requires the Attorney General's consent. In the Ajax incident, we arrested right away for assault.
That's right, yeah.
Assault with a weapon times two and, and some other charges as well in relation to what happened to that lady, or the victim in that matter. And we certainly connected with the Crown Attorney immediately and, and told him about the circumstances to make sure that they are taking it as seriously as we are.
And then what's the turnaround then? So let's say the Ajax attack is a good example because that happened, you know, I think a month and change ago. Has a charge of a hate motivated attack been laid by the attorney? Is this an issue of manpower? Is this an issue of, like, what is, what is the gap there?
No, it, it's a great question. The Crown Attorney's Office has challenged every opportunity I get to speak to the Solicitor General, more importantly, Attorney General. I, I talk about the lack of resources within the Oshawa courthouse. They have about twenty-six, twenty-seven lawyers and our region is the fastest growing one in the province. So I, I, I keep discussing it. In, in that case itself, there will not be a hate crime. It'll be hate motivated. And that determination's already, I believe, been made by the Crown Attorney. So once we lay those charges, it's up to the Crown Attorney to comment on how they're going to proceed. And certainly throughout the judicial pre-trials and the other functions of, of the judicial system, there will be other factors that are brought into play. And, and that's why it's very hard for us because there may be some underlying issues that, that exist in which the court wishes to deal with it in another avenue. I can tell you though, from a response perspective, we took it very seriously.
Oh, no, no, it was, it was top notch. It was instantaneous.
No, I, I appreciate the, the comment, but we took it very seriously, as we will with every incident that, that involves hate as an element of the offense.
So going back to this hate crime unit, will there be like an element of community consultation, which is always very important? I keep bringing it up, like, you know, we have the Durham region one, the local municipality one, like, will there be, and as well as the, you know, I'm sure the Jewish communities already reached out, the Muslim, like all these communities, will they, will there be a, a method of consultation to kind of set a baseline expectation of response?
Yes, and, and so I, I can tell you that that work has been going on for years. We have an Equity and Inclusion Unit that has been working really hard at building those relationships with our stakeholder communities that exist today. The, the, the reality is, is that while those relationships are very strong, our frontline is very junior. And what we're focusing on are two prongs. First, ensuring that our own people are educated on what their authorities and what our best practices are and what our governance says. Making sure that we have supervisors that are available that will ensure the quality of that service being delivered, that the first touch matters a great deal, as, as you know. And, and second is to, to leverage those relationships that we have built, built and, and strengthen them and build new relationships with new emerging groups as we become, you know, growing as a community, so too does our diversity grow. And we're looking at, at, at making sure that we are touching all, all the communities that we have who reside here.
Okay, last question. You had mentioned the last time you presented to Regional Council, the diversity audit was on your desk. It's going to be imminently displayed, but I don't think we've seen it yet.
No, you haven't, and it's actually on the agenda for May twentieth for our Police Services Board.
So come to the Police Service Board, you'll, you'll have the kind of the full recommendations from Ty.
The Ty Smith, yes.
Okay, looking forward to that. Thank you, Chief, for the answers. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Neal.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, hello, Chief. I'm glad that you're here today with your staff. Monday at Oshawa, there was a report came forward about a Community Safety Day to be hailed in North Oshawa. Thank you very much. I remember I mentioned that to you in the fall. That's amazing. You were able to bring that forward and participate with our fire department and our first responders. So I appreciate, I mean, it's going to mean a lot for that community. And hopefully someday it'll be at a new police station in North Oshawa. In the not-too-distant future, I'm hoping, as well as Counselor Maam Kaitri and myself and the rest of the council. But I just wanted to ask you, Chief, the malls. You showed an incident there of one of your police officers and they tried to apprehend a vehicle. The residents, as you know, go out to malls, go to their car, open their trunk. And I'm getting reports about this kind of stuff taking place. They're distracted. They have other things on their mind. They got a hockey practice, soccer practice. They got to take, you know. Are you getting any reports about that? And if you are, are you dealing with the mall owners or how does that work in, in regards to some of these areas?
I, I can tell you that most, you know, that a large percentage of crime is not reported generally. You know, and there's a number of different factors there. When it is reported, we, we do conduct an investigation. We collect video like we did in, in this instance here. We, we try to identify people. We also work with property owners to target hardened, if you will, their, their properties, provide, you know, crime prevention information. And, and this is actually one of the very reasons that we're building out our career units. We're in the infancy of truly building out our community response units to, to solve some of these problems and to be proactive in their approach within the geographical area that the officers are assigned. And so this becomes, this becomes the concern that I have is that we are not just chasing the emergency calls and just focusing on one category and that is the, the, our response times or how fast we, we respond to any crime. But rather, like we did in Oshawa, invest officers in the strategic area to reduce the demand and therefore reduce victimization. And it also enhances our ability to deliver and, and protect our communities when people are better informed. So there has to be that balance and we're leveraging our data right now to understand, to understand what that right number looks like. And at the same time, we have a region that is exploding. And I think with the recent announcement yesterday by the Premier about our four oh seven, I think we're going to see a bigger explosion in, in, in an area that is sort of disconnected from where our density is right now, which is really along that, you know, southern Taunton Road to four oh one corridor. So our, our region is changing dramatically and we continue to, to look at that. But I, I appreciate the question. And, and we do receive, we, we do receive reports and, and those are investigated. These are often organized groups that, that are operating throughout our region.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I was just gonna, like you took the words right out of my mouth without an announcement yesterday. Again, I was thinking, what about the infrastructure? We're trying to keep up with it, but meantime, I mean, is like, are, like, do you have a liaison with Queens Park in regards to your department and what's coming down for, for North Oshawa and areas like that?
Well, while we do speak to elected officials regularly about the issues surrounding public safety, the politicking we leave to the Police Services Board to do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Chief, and it's always good to see you as, as usual. I am going to have a couple of questions. I'm going to follow up and counsel Lee's question. So the hate crime unit will be fully functional as you alluded to in July, I believe?
Yes, that's right. Our, our funding, the way it comes in, is, means that July is the earliest that we can staff.
So when you're fully funded and operational with officers, are there plans to engage with the communities that's impacted by hate crime?
Absolutely, and, and so what I was trying to articulate and probably not very well is that while we're looking at the hate crime unit as, you know, an investment that we're making, I'm also investing in the Equity and Inclusion Unit that is engaged in that. And those units together help us both address the internal education of our people and our, our staff and the community at large and bringing them together. So it, while I know the focus right now and the shiny thing is that hate crime unit, it is also building out our Equity and Inclusion Unit to, to make sure that we can deliver those services and continue to build upon those partnerships that we have. So, yes.
Through, through the chair, you also said there were twenty-nine instances where the police were involved, investigations, et cetera. Were there any charges laid? You didn't specifically say that.
So, so many of those offenses require first to identify the suspect, you know, give you, you know, the swastika on, on the fence. The collection of video, the interviewing of witnesses, all of those things take some time. I don't actually have that stat, but, but it is a good question. I probably should have come prepared with that stat. That, that's a good point. But I, I can tell you that investigations are at different stages throughout. One of the incidents that is referred to in here is the incident that happened in Ajax. And I, I can assure you that an arrest was made promptly.
Yeah, okay. You mentioned, and I know you talk about Bill C seventy-five a lot, which we all agree, it's a terrible, terrible bill. And I believe that will be rectified hopefully in the near future. But, so that has attributed to a lot of the increase in crime that you spoke about. But that's not the only factor. I have done a lot of research on this and believe it or not, this, this is going to help you or something I would support. The overriding reason of folks committing is that if the probability of getting caught is pretty low, that contribute to more crime. If, if you're going to get caught and you know the probability of getting caught is higher, then that, that also reduces crime a lot. That's what the experts have said or from all the reports that I've read are most of them. Having said that, would CCTV be, provide assistance in that? And that came up because at our council, we were looking at that. I believe your force, your officers recommended Bowmanville as one of the places that that would be helpful. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so first of all, I agree with the experts. The low probability of being caught is, is not a deterrent to, to people who are predisposed to committing a criminal offense. That, that is true. And that's why the proactive time that officers have, when we diminish it, we, we don't, we're not in the right places at the right time, engaged in the right kinds of activities to catch those people. CCTV has been instrumental in keeping our region safe. We're a very safe region. I, I know while I'm talking about these stats here, I, I could be painting a different picture. I, I am not. I, I want to build upon our success. I'm just very, very worried about what, what the future has in store for us. CCTV has been instrumental and we have leveraged it. And I have to tell you, the region of Durham is probably our biggest partner in CCTV, making it available to us almost in real time, although we don't monitor in real time for a number of different areas. The other thing about CCTV as well is we're working very closely with the Privacy Commissioner to make sure that what we are doing with CCTV footage is lawful and more importantly, admissible in court later because it doesn't do us any favors. And I have to tell you, the, the region of Durham is, is an incredible partner, as is many of the municipalities represented here in this room.
Okay, so I'm, I'm glad you said that because it came up and I would have asked you because the question was that it's an invasion of privacy. And can you address that, that it's not?
No, we work with the Privacy Commissioner to make sure that the rules are followed to a T. We have the, the, you know, the added burden of making sure that what we do collect and how it does help us can actually be admissible in court. If we get anything and it's called fruit from the poison tree that was unlawful and on its face, that evidence that we glean, the information we glean, is not admissible at all. So we have to be very careful and we thread a needle and we could, we're very fortunate to have some incredible. we thread a needle and we could, we're very fortunate to have some incredible experts in this within our own organization.
Thank you. Such a one final question. And this is of a more serious note. It has been documented, or last week, I believe, in Ajax, there was a group of folks that meet to discuss the missing black youth, folks, kids, et cetera. I was unable to attend that meeting. I don't know, did anyone, did you get invited or anyone from DRPS attend?
Yes. So I'll say this. We have attended a number of meetings and included our Diversity Advisory Committee. Actually, our co-chair was one of the moderators of one of the earlier meetings. We came to know about that meeting very late in the day. I under, my understanding is many people weren't available for that meeting and we were amongst that group. We did send representatives, but certainly not at the level to answer the kinds of questions. I can tell you also, this is a, this is a serious issue, just missing children to start with. The focus and what I'd like to have is I'd like to have an honest, robust conversation about what the, the issues around missing children are to start. Within our region, we don't have any missing black youth males that are still missing. All of them have been located. And there's a variety of reasons why they go missing in the first place. And we, you know, work with them and with members of social services to make sure that they're receiving the support that they need, not find themselves in that predicament. The other thing is, it is about, I believe it's 76%, sorry, 68% of, of missing black children are actually female. And this raises the issue around things like human trafficking and other areas as well. And so, well, we can focus on one very specific function. I like to think about the entire issue because I think it's that serious to our community. And I can tell you, we are heavily invested in this and I welcome any opportunity to speak about these very, very serious issues. But to, you know, when these meetings are set up and there are a number of meetings and we have attended all of them except this last one here, I think that that's important. I think that we need to make sure that the right people are at the table and that are able to provide. And we're all very, very busy, but these are very, very serious issues. I agree with you.
Yeah. And just to wrap up, it came to the forefront yesterday, I got a call from someone, a teacher, respectable family, and their child went missing. But there's a 24 hour before you get, is that?
Absolutely not true. No.
Okay.
No, there is, there's no 24 hour rule. There's, if they were provided that information, that's not really good. And I, I'll educate everybody here. If you get those phone calls, there's no 24 hour rule. If somebody was intended to be somewhere and they're not and there's some overriding concern particularly around age and, you know, people who are infirm, you know, the elderly who maybe don't have their cognitive skills, call immediately. The sooner you call, the more likely we'll find them safe.
Okay. Thank you very much. And you and your officers, keep safe, be safe. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Crawford?
Thank you through you, your worship, Chair. You know, with all due respect, I was at that meeting.
Yep.
And it was a full meeting. The room was full. And they were extremely disappointed that we didn't have any representation from DRPS. And I've been speaking with Chris Bovee and we're going to figure something out. But, you know, regardless of who's missing, it's irrelevant. These parents had an expectation. They were in the room and they had an expectation that, well, maybe the direct issue would not have been addressed, but that preventative measures and that, you know, tips on what to watch for would have been something that would have been extremely helpful. So I'm just saying, it was a full room and it was uncomfortable. Shootings and firearms discharged already. We have already surpassed 2022. We're not six months into the year. What's, what is going on?
There's a number of investigations that are ongoing right now that obviously it would not be prudent for me to talk about. Much of the, almost all of this is targeted. It's very specific and there are different organized crime groups that are participants. We are actively investigating those incidents. And you're going, you know, this region here will hear very shortly about one significant arrest that we've, several significant arrests, but one particular project that we're going to be resolving very, very shortly. And you're going to begin to see some of these results. Some of these things are taking some time. And when these patterns develop, we are very quick now to dedicate resources to it.
The gun seizures are down.
Yes.
So the two together are very concerning. I know that by saying that they're targeted, that is supposed to be somewhat of a relief to us, although I can't say that that's necessarily a relief in the neighborhoods that it's happening in. And so it, I don't, somehow the role of a counselor, we're now the mental health expert, we're now the drug addiction expert, and now we're the in charge of safety. So it really does depend on the whole partnership of the team. It's not just us anymore. It's not just you anymore. We have to maintain this partnership because they come to us because we're the most accessible, correct? And so when we go to community healing meetings, we need to be able to have all the people at the table. When we can, when residents are asking, we need to have people at the table that are experts in their field. And that sure the heck isn't me at this point. Thank you. I wasn't going to bring that up. Craneville brought it up. I wasn't going to bring it up, but that was a very uncomfortable meeting that I attended. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, I wanted to ask you about the community safety lines for a moment. And I've asked a question previously in previous visits, but where are we at with the dedicated staffing to be able to move forward with what was discussed with the rebranding of the community-based groups, which would be the old Neighborhood Watch, our Road Watch programs, all of them need rebranding. And I know that when we did budget, there was a commitment for a dedicated staff that would be backed in the community, able to work with community groups to start to rebuild the sense of safety at the local level.
So that's our community response offices and we are beginning the early stages of investing in those areas. That work will continue. It's nowhere near the levels that we need, but we had divisions that literally had two people that worked in the community response trying to deliver all of these programs. Programs like Neighborhood Watch are not police programs. Those are independent agencies that have their own resource challenges. And what I don't have is I don't have people to dedicate to one particular group to do one particular thing. The reality is that the world continues to evolve and change and, you know, little Facebook neighborhood sites seem to pass long information a lot quicker than, you know, we even receive it. And so, you know, we're looking at different creative ways and leveraging technology to help us deliver those messages and to create that safety net. Nothing replaces people knowing their neighbors and, and understanding, you know, what's going on in a neighborhood and then reporting it. So one of the things that we're really trying to focus on right now, and one of the things this council has let me begin the process of investing in is those community response teams, those officers that are engaged in the very, what I said before, long-term problem solving, is to understand communities, who the power brokers are, and be invested in those areas and assigned to those areas in terms, in order to make those relationships and bring the resources that are needed so that there is someone to call. And I think that that is where we stand today. I wish I could move much quicker, Counselor, I'll be honest with you. But I'm limited by, you know, all the needs that I have and I have a finite number of resources that I'm applying to it. But this council really helped me begin, really helped us, the team to begin to invest in these areas.
Myself and my colleagues, we've been now doing what we call tri-ward town hall meetings, which in a sense are right across the entire city. One of the topics that have come up is the community safety aspects. Would it be through you to reach out to, to look at one of our tri-town hall meetings to share the information you're talking to me about and us about with our community so that they can better understand where community policing is at now and how we're moving forward with the modernized force?
So I'll say this.
I'd be looking at September, October.
Yeah. And I invite you to reach out to the local unit commander. One of the things that we have to be really concerned, and one of the things I'm really concerned about is, we could be, my staff could be dedicated to just meetings and never actually doing their work. And it takes time to prepare for those meetings. Like, you know, putting this together here, thinking I'm getting all the stats and very high level, and then Counselor Anderson asked me a very specific question about how many I've solved, is a great question and something I hadn't considered because I'm trying to balance so many balls. This is probably, I'm doing my own job evaluation now. I hope my bosses aren't listening. But, but all this to say that if we can get, you know, three wards together and there's substantive people, that's a good investment of resources to bring that kind of information. As our capacity grows, so too will our capacity to be engaged in more of these types of meetings. As it stands right now, I have to tell you, it's very, very difficult because our staff often has to change their schedule when they should be deployed here to actually be a meeting here. And it's not to say one isn't as important as the other. It's just a matter of capacity and time. It all comes down to people, time and money. It's applied to demand and as the demand grows, I need more people and so they can create more time to apply to the demand. That costs us money.
Thank you. It's an honest answer.
Yeah, I'm just being honest.
No, no, and that's fair. Thank you.
Mayor Collier, you don't have to push a button. You're to close, right? Or you'd like to speak now and then close? Okay. All right. So then I'll go to you now then.
I just further to Counselor Brenner and Counselor Crawford and Counselor Anderson's questions, I just wanted the chief to expand a little bit on some of the stats that were given, like the decrease in guns being taken out the streets, like some of the changes in stats to impaired driving. There's been reference to a meeting that the police didn't have the people to attend. I just want you to speak a little bit to the impacts on having officers on the road and some of these stats we're seeing, clearance rates, all these other things in relation to what you were touching on there, Chief, with regard to all the extra things and the public appearances and all the other things that were being asked to do. One does affect the other.
Okay, Chief, before you answer the question, so to the delegates in the room, when the chief is finished, we're going to alter the agenda to bring you forward so that, and then we will be breaking for lunch after that. Chief, please answer that question.
Absolutely. So the majority of our gun seizures in previous years has been through proactive stops. Our impaired driving collisions has risen dramatically as our calls for service rise and the amount of time we're spending on calls. And so putting people in the right places at the right time to be engaged in the right kind of activities, and we call it proactive, you know, requires some planning and requires the availability of time. When our community response officers in particular, who again, have been a very small group and remain a small group and we're trying to grow that, are pulled away, they're not engaged in those kind of activities to be, you know, interacting and interceding when we have impaired drivers and others. It's then left to very specialized units, like our traffic unit who has to conduct a ride spot check for us to identify impaired drivers. It means that most of the guns that we've seized this year has been as a result of project-based, dedicating a bunch of resources to attack an organized crime group to then get firearms. It is, it is not the way that we have done it before and what we have seen that there is a correlation between officer availability or not being available and the seizure of guns or the interdiction of impaired drivers.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Yamada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question through you to the chief, when I was listening to the presentation earlier, you mentioned a criminal who started off, I guess, I think he said 2014, had been out on bail five times, I guess, multiple arrests. Why is it hard for us to keep someone like that behind bars, in my opinion, where they belong?
C-75 focused on a Supreme Court decision that basically laid out the groundwork for where most people should be presumed to be innocent until proven guilty. Of course, that is enshrined in our constitution, but really leveraged that and said that it should be the least onerous conditions that somebody should be released upon. And what that did is it was redefined, the second part of that test really focused on the danger that they posed to the public or for recidivism. That real, that second part of the test was never really applied, in my opinion, nor does a justice of the peace or a judge who's releasing somebody on conditions have to provide reasons on the record as to how they weighed that out. And I think that that is a gap in what has happened. We can't, you know, as a community, we're left, as a police service, I'm left to guess why somebody wasn't held in custody or how it was applied. So I think that those two things have happened with Bill C-75. The government in 2024 introduced, January 2024, introduced Bill C-48 that began to address some of the gaps in there, introduced more offenses that were reverse onus, which means that the accused has to show why they should be released as opposed to the presumption that they should be released in almost every other case. And C-48, while it moved the needle forward on specific offenses like intimate partner violence, we saw in this case, this person's been released, committed four assaults against an intimate partner while on bail. So the application of the law as it stood hasn't been consistent and has produced these results. And then you have 73% of all the failed complies being withdrawn by the crown, just simply because the courts don't have the time to deal with all of them. And so there's a lack of respect for the judicial orders of the court.
The folks that you're seeing commit the organized crime within the car thefts and the rest that you're making, do you have a number or understanding how many of those people are out on bail?
Oh, the vast majority of them. I don't have that number, but I would not be surprised if it's in the 70s, 70%. And there's multiple groups. Counselor Yamada, there's multiple groups that are operating right across the GTA. We have not been immune. We actually participated in a joint forces operation where we actually sent officers to the Port of Montreal to intercept, to recover our own cars and to begin those investigations because we realized Canadian border services just didn't have the capacity to be doing that kind of work. And, you know, there are a number of issues to solve this. This is not a simple thing as, you know, repealing C-75 or any of these things. I think there's going to require some very thoughtful action on a number of different fronts and the resourcing of specific teams that are tackling this very serious issue. That is funding, and I can tell you that I sit on a number of both provincial and federal tables, stolen cars and these organized crime groups are actually directly funding terrorism activity around the world. And we are not immune.
And thank you for that. And Chief, I guess my final question would be, are you, how often do you meet with representatives, I guess, from the federal government to have these conversations about bail reform?
I can tell you, I did meet with the former Attorney General of the country, Reeve Vranny, who actually came here to regional headquarters, to my office, to meet, to discuss this. I can say that the MP, Ryan Turnbull, has been very engaged in some of these conversations and facilitated some of those meetings. But, you know, meetings are one thing. You know, meetings are one thing, um, we're, we're still waiting for? For, for something to, to, to happen that begins to, to turn the tide on, on some of these very serious issues, so? I, I can tell you that we are engaged with our local elected officials. And I, and I hope to uh work with uh, uh, our newly elected officials um to see some movement on this.
I, I think we all wanna see some movement on uh bail reform, especially uh hearing uh some of the examples that you've? Uh, talked about within your um, your presentation. Uh, today, we've got to keep our community safe, uh, and ensure uh the governments, uh, federal and provincial are doing their part, thank you.
So chief, that exhausts the list except for me. So first question, the officer that was in that video today, is he okay or is she okay?
He, he is, yes, um, he um recovered very, very quickly, he was very fortunate, the car didn't drive forward.
Now, the question I have is, what was the consequences of trying to run over a police officer, what happened to the individual in the car?
Uh, that, that case is still before the courts, um, that, that um person uh was charged with assault with a weapon. We're gonna have to wait and see what happens with that, and, and they were on bail too.
So assault with a weapon, out on bail?
Yes.
Under undertaking or bail?
Uh, uh, bail. There, there's other offenses as well that this person-
That was the next one, first time? Uh, the second question I have is, uh, you know, auto theft's a big thing. How many cars are stolen from garages?
Yeah, as, zero from inside garages.
So why wouldn't, why wouldn't the insurance industry? Be more suggestive considering this is a national problem, that those people who are lucky enough to have garages make sure that they put their car in their garages where it belongs? Cause we're all paying for it.
That's a great question.
You don't have to answer it. Uh, and now you're talking about gun seized, I'm sure they were all registered handguns?
Uh, no sir, those are all crime guns illegally um in possession.
And then um? I, I wanna ask, um? And, and you have worked with this individual in your previous life, and I would, would have thought that policing issues at? In Ottawa would have gotten more support when you had the former police chief of the largest city in this country there. He and I had some dealings when he was the Minister of Public Safety that didn't go well for me or him. But have you as an organization, as the large or all police chiefs uh in your association, asked for a meeting with the new prime minister in the hopes? That we can do something with the challenges of crime?
Yes, so I can tell you, I sit on the executive of the Ontario Associations of Chiefs of Police and, and uh we just had an executive meeting. And that's actually one of the things that we've um are writing a letter, uh, actually right now, the executive director is? To, to meet with the, the prime minister, um, to begin to discuss these issues. I can tell you that we are absolutely aligned with the Canadian Associations of Chiefs of Police. Ontario represents about forty-five percent of all police officers in this, in this country. And so we have a very large voice in that and, and I, I don't think that they can just ignore us, um, if we, we ask for a meeting, so? I'm, I'm very hopeful that we're, um, as an executive, we're, we're able to meet.
Uh, chief, would it be possible for you asked, to ask the, our association president to do that in partnership with all the police associations across the country so the voice can be heard?
I, I'll pass that on to um President Tummens.
You know, last week, uh, the uh, the mayors and re, mayor, or the chairs met last week and policing is a big conversation amongst all of us. Uh, when you go, go to um Ottawa, can you just please remind the people there that the cost of policing? Is paid for by the taxpayers and the decisions the judicial system makes puts an extra expense on to police services?
I've echoed that, sir, at every meeting I've been at.
And I'm a very simple thought person, if you've been arrested thirty-nine times? Um, you've been out on bail a number of times. When does an individual become a habitual criminal versus a member of society? You don't have to answer that.
Yeah.
And I'll give you the last one, it's not the form of a question, but? Uh, our solicitor, uh, Jason Hunt, I've made this statement before. I would prepare to find a couple hours every day in my schedule to sit and deal as uh in the courts with some of the challenges that you have. Uh, trust me, it would be ex, a lot of it would be expediated. And uh, it would work uh to help make things better, but somehow I don't think that the courts would allow me to sit for two hours a day? Based on my, my opinions. Uh, chief, thank you and to your officers, it is Police Week.
Yes.
You do have a display at the Oshawa Shopping Centre? So if, if members of council get a chance to, to uh go down and say hello, it would be appreciated and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
My meetings are backing up, sir, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you so much.
Councillor Chapman, could I give you, get a motion from you to alter the agenda to bring our delegations forward? Thank you, seconded by councillor Dyes. On the motion to alter the? I was hoping to alter the agenda, do the delegations break for lunch? Soon as we, sure, okay. Okay. You move to alter? Yeah, no, we'll have to come back to you, so that your motion is to alter the agenda to bring the delegations forward. That's what we're dealing with right now. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? In opposition? None, that carries, we'll do the first delegation. The first delegation is Trevor Noble and there is another delegation, uh, five point two is from Malcolm Wright. You're both part of the same organization, would you like to present together? Then please come forward. Because you're presenting together, you have ten minutes and uh when you're ready, please start.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair John Henry and committee as a, as a whole. At first I wanna express my gratitude because I didn't know that this was all happening behind the scenes. All the coordination and uh all the efforts in keeping the community safe. So uh, thank you, uh, that's just a little bit of a side note. Uh, my name is Malcolm Wright, I am a co-founder of a non-for-profit called Nobelum. Uh, we have a mandate to launch a hundred black-owned businesses in STEM by twenty twenty-five and I stand before you here today as a would, uh, would-be resident. But also to say that we've exceeded those expectations. Uh, we fully support the motion eight point one and establishing social procurement practices in the Durham region. And hopefully our organization will be a testimonial for the effectiveness of um? Sorry, uh, social procurement, I'm not sure if the slides are readily available or how, that's beautiful, great. Amazing, so we are a non-for-profit social enterprise dedicated to economic development through the power of community. With the mandate of launching a hundred black-owned businesses? Almost there, no pressure, beautiful. Yeah, so uh, with our mandate of launching a hundred black-owned businesses in STEM, it is really about uh the power of community moving for, uh, moving forward. Uh, to empower uh those entrepreneurs that might be underrepresented. And ultimately, the, the reason why we had this idea was to fill a gap. And that gap was only two percent of venture capital uh goes towards black-owned businesses. As well as only three percent of STEM professionals identify as black. Well, most importantly, we try and operate under operational excellence and making sure that we're deeply rooted in the community connections? To bring for, bring forward these type of opportunities uh together. So we're mostly recognized for our innovator program and that strategically partnered with the University of Toronto Scarborough campus. Where we actually established an endowment fund of two hundred thousand dollars to fund underrepresented entrepreneurs. And these first three years were really like a pilot, now we've become champions in other underrepresented groups such as women in STEM and entrepreneurship. As well as newcomers uh through our catalyst for entrepreneurship and innovation exchange. What brought us to the region was Accelerate Durham, so I've known uh Trevin since the inception of Nobelum, he was a part of our student alumni committee. And we were very cognizant of why we try and establish these committees, so everyone has a seat at the table. Uh, in partnership with the town of Ajax who graciously uh gave us s- some funding through uh the Ajax Partnership Fund. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we had Durham region stakeholders at the table as well. That's what led us to the Durham Region Association of Black Professionals Entrepreneurs, as well as engaging Invest Durham as well to really shape this. And through that event, we were be, we were able to uh put forth ten thousand dollars in award prizes for entrepreneurs. And really try and uncover those hidden gems within the community. So how we measure success is really about training and upskilling, uh, those strategic partnerships and collaboration and ultimately business development and sustainability. Oh, a little bit about Accelerate Durham as well though, I'd like to talk a little bit about uh the registrants, so we had over four hundred and fifteen registrants to this event. And uh, the attendance was a hundred thirty, and mind you, February fifteenth was the biggest snowstorm of the year. So that you can see the dedication of the community. Aside from that, another glaring accomplishment that there was a hundred and seventy-three application starts that reflects the hunger uh for social procurement initiatives in the Durham region. So truly our ask is simple, what we wanna do is uh use this roadmap as a plug-and-play? And uh implement these social procurement strategies. So it really starts off with community establishing that ecosystem and making sure that Durham residents feed off of one of each other, one, one another. And are, uh, it's clear that there is a, a, a level of support needed. Uh, from there, there's also programming where not only are we talking about upskilling but knowledge transfer. Cause one of the most important things like how can we participate in spaces that we don't know even exists? From there, of course, uh, upskilling and knowledge transfer is important, but it's about the wraparound services as well, advisory, right? Like what do these entrepreneurs or people within the ecosystem need, uh, need for, in terms of social procurement to be investment-ready? And then from, uh, the lastly is that access to capital, once you have all, all this mix. We at Nobelum have really focused on, and a lot of our funding come from private organizations, but we truly believe? With the public sector being behind social procurement practices, this can not only elevate the work that we're doing? But really, you know, uh, supercharge what we're trying to accomplish and I wanna pass the mic over to partner Trevin to talk about a little bit more about social procurement.
Thank you, Malcolm. Alright, so question of the day, what exactly is social procurement? So simply put, social procurement is essentially just using government buying power in order to accomplish a variety of different community and economic goals. So this can include a range of things, so prioritizing um local small businesses and bids. Choosing environmentally responsible suppliers, all the way to prioritizing ethical and socially responsible vendors, right? Social procurement is not just about spending more, it's about spending smarter. So that public dollars can be used twice, once to secure goods and services that we need, but also to advancing and investing in our communities. So as you look above, uh, you'll see kind of the three main pillars that kind of drive social procurement programs, so? Coast to coast, social procurement is a practice that is being vastly adopted across the country. So it has a myriad of benefits, but I'd say they kind of fall under these three main pillars. So the first one is economic development, so social procurement is a proven strategy for economic growth and job creation. So for example, in the city of Toronto, uh, there was over a hundred million dollars awarded to BIPOC businesses in contracts. In turn, this was able to create over a hundred new jobs and a hundred and ninety-four subcontract, subcontracting opportunities within the city. Not to mention in the city of Calgary, since launching their benefit-driven procurement program in twenty twenty-one? The city was able to award over thirty-one million dollars in contracts, approximately twenty-two point nine million of those? Were allocated to local, small and medium-sized businesses within the city of Calgary, right? And those awarded contracts, sixty-two percent of those firms actually had apprenticeship pr- training programs that were able to employ uh local residents, right? So point being that this is a huge driver of economic growth and job creation, being able to support our small businesses. So second, second, social procurement doesn't just stimulate economic activity, but it is also a great tool for building social infrastructure and community development. So for example, again, the city of Toronto's Housing Now initiative uh was able to use social procurement to uh? Link organizations that were able to create affordable housing units, uh, affordable childcare centers and other uh local hiring provisions from its developers. For a very, for a variety of different projects. And then lastly, sustainability, so on one hand, obviously environmental sustainability by being able to choose uh environmentally responsible vendors. But importantly, uh, economic sustainability, right? A big reason why these municipalities and cities are adopting social procurement is the ability to build, you know, independence. So for example, local businesses recirculate two to four times more money into local economies than? Large conglomerates, multinationals, et cetera, right? Specifically sixty percent of money spent on local businesses stay within their communities compared to thirty percent by, again, multinationals and conglomerates. Social procurement, again, is a way to invest in our communities and I think given? The current situation down south, it's important for us to stand on our own two feet and build sustainable businesses within the Durham region.
Lastly, we wanna touch about uh success stories, uh, please meet Cynthia Anay. Through our programming, she was able to receive a two point one five million dollar federal grant, some angel investment as well as uh? Develop her, uh, scale her venture by producing uh high-performance materials for construction in the manufacturing industry. This is just one uh situation where since twenty twenty-two and the start of our mandate? Our company portfolio has uh generated over fifteen million dollars in uh revenue. Raised over one point five million dollars in venture capital and uh most importantly created two hundred fifty new jobs across STEM industries. So with, with that, there's always a ripple effect and just kind of going back to like Accelerate Durham and having the town of Ajax supporting us. It's also bringing other investment from outside of the community into the community as well. Uh, we really believe that uh Durham region as a whole should be put on the map and uh that's why we're uh here to support that, that bill of eight point one. Or the motion eight point one, sorry, one last thing.
Uh, no, that's it.
Questions, uh, first is councillor Crawford.
Thank you, uh, Chair, I just wanna say thank you for your presentation. Uh, I was fortunate enough to be a judge in one of your events in Ajax and it was a lot of fun, very, very, uh, very good to, to see the talent that would came out of there, I know, questions only. How many other events have you done in Durham?
Uh, we've only done one other event and that was just a panel discussion, uh, discussion where we were accelerating black excellence within Durham region. So we brought a lot of different Durham region stakeholders and I believe the town of Ajax uh Economic Development Off, Officer to really kind of get in touch with the community.
Excellent, so you need to have more of that here, right? You wanna, we wanna expand here, you're both Durham boys, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yeah, okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Chair, just two questions, uh, what are some of the practical challenges, I mean, this is great in theory, but what are some of the practical challenges that may be faced when trying to implement a social procurement policy?
Yeah, I think one of them would be a lack of uh policy framework, so we really wanna be intentional as to what are the outcomes at the end of the day. And with that, uh, we also don't wanna give the, any type of optics of this being kind of performative. Uh, another thing that I would say is uh supplier readiness, so we wanna make sure that like, uh, within that roadmap, you saw that there are those, that investment readiness? Portion of the, the roadmap and making sure that this uh, this, this map is very cohesive in a sense where? Not only like not-for-profits like ourselves, uh, like, like myself at Nobelum or other community-led organizations can talk directly to the municipalities. We want to uh collaborate and ensure that there's transparency and I, I already said it, but like, how are we really supposed to? Participate in spaces that don't even exist, that we don't know even, even exist and I didn't know really about this space and here I am presenting. I do think that there's a lot of opportunity to get the community involved as well. And, and lastly, I would say limited uh awareness as well, so having these community engagement uh discussions? Being able to engage other different uh stakeholders, whether it be not-for-profit or private institution or public institutions. At least working together, there's a lot more opportunity to kind of grow this into the next level.
Okay, and last question is, um, so if uh eight point one does pass and the region implements this? Uh, what kind of metrics or data should we be collecting to track social and economic impact of procurement policies?
Uh, I think there's a chain reaction, right, so like a lot of organizations need like capacity. So on our side of the aisle, uh, there's a concept called uh S R O Y, social return on investment. So these, some of these metrics is like, okay, you're investing your money into these mentorship or- So these, some of these metrics is like, okay, you're investing your money into these mentorship or partnership opportunities. What kind of revenue is generated by these individuals? What kind of job creation is there as well? And being very cognizant and intentional on having that wraparound service where it's not only like, okay, here, here's the training, good luck. But kind of touching base and being able to reflect on the, the learnings of these type of initiatives. Would be the most important thing, I would say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair, for the questions.
Councillor Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Excellent presentation, very, very informative. What I wanted to ask you about would be your relationship and specifically with the lower-tier municipalities. You know, the city of Pickering where I'm from. And whether or not you'd be willing to approach the city as well and other lower-tier municipalities. To begin to make them aware, to look at what needs to be fine-tuned regarding procurement policies. For example, city of Pickering.
Yeah, short answer, we welcome the opportunity to engage with all the municipalities in the room, so. Yeah, feel free to reach out.
We will definitely talk online and definitely move forward. The other question that I had is. What type of relationships are you looking at in terms of the private sector with some of the boards of trades and chamber of commerce is across the region? And is there anything that we may be able to do as individual members of council to assist you with linking if you already haven't?
So we're always looking to collaborate with like-minded individuals and this, this work actually comes with advocacy, a little bit of background to like. I'm an education consultant, the co-founder is a software developer and interior designer. We had no, you know, background in running an accelerator, but we knew what we had to do. And engaging with individuals like yourselves to kind of open up those doors. And really put emphasis on collaboration and competition will be imperative for what we're trying to accomplish within the region.
Sorry, just, I guess get to the main question in terms of who we've been able to connect with. So for example, Ajax Board of, Ajax Pickering Board of Trade, we've been able to engage them, but nothing officially yet. So I think they're definitely very high on our priority list as well as Oshwa Chamber of Commerce, Whupi Chamber of Commerce. Are both groups that we'd like to reach out to and possibly collaborate with, so.
Sounds fantastic. We'll certainly try and help you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That exhausts the list, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, so, sorry. So there is, push your microphone, please. So councillor Lee, you have a motion to alter the agenda.
Very quickly, yeah, I think this will be dealt, hopefully very quickly. They answered a lot of questions. I'd like to move up to the agenda so we can just deal with the matter now.
Looking for a secondary? Segment by councillor Brenner. All those in favor of altering the agenda to bring forward item eight point one, which is a motion to establish social procurement practices? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, councillor Lee? Pardon? Oh, push your microphone, please. So the item is already on the floor. You want to call the question on the item? Okay, well, the item is already flowing. Okay, Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I appreciate I will support this. It's going to staff, for staff to report back. I'm, I'm going to go back to a past life where we looked at socially responsible investing, which is. Not completely different from this. Figuring out, you know, what companies are environmentally sustainable, as, as an example, are really, really difficult. You don't know where the borders necessarily are. I appreciate the, the comment on creating a policy, certainly supporting small local businesses is wonderful. But we really need to be wary of, of putting barriers. For the, the regional government or municipal governments in front of other, other businesses. So very frequently, large businesses have the ability to address these questions. I, I can, I can give anyone that wants to chat with me some direct input into a, a small local business. That works very hard here locally. And some of the initiatives that are meant to do well are absolute impediments. For some of our small businesses. Well, I will support this. I think staff, I mean, social responsibility, medical responsibility. These are really, really nebulous areas that, that we're trying to define. I, I would to councillor Brenner's comments, I, I would suggest that staff talk at the chambers of commerce. Talk at the boards of trade, particularly around the micro businesses. Where the very businesses that we are trying to support may in fact find this to be, to be a real challenge. If we don't get it right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? None in opposition, that carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We'll move on to our next delegation, which is John Anthony Stevenson, Director of the Boltzmann Institute. On the topic of transit-oriented community district energy.
Chairman Henry, honorable councillors, members of the committee, staff and honorable guest. You might wonder, what is the Boltzmann Institute? It's, it's a think, it's an independent think tank. And our mission is to do research, publish reports. Which attempt to influence governments and civil society to adopt. Support and adopt effective and affordable measures to reduce emissions from the use of energy. So we, we are focused currently on building heating. Because that's, that's low-hanging fruit. You should be able to avoid or reduce emissions from building heating. Much easier than transportation industry or farming. Now, we are staffed by all unpaid volunteers. We all have considerable experience in the energy business. In my own case, forty years, which has included helping start up numerous district energy systems. And for example, Windsor, Sudbury, Markham, Hamilton, Region Park, downtown Calgary. Vancouver, South East, Wolf Creek, and a bunch I've forgotten. Modesty impels me to mention that I've been involved in some projects that ran into serious problems. And it's going back to the Bruce Energy Center in the nineteen eighties. And in the early nineties, the project for Edmonton Power in downtown Edmonton. District Heating and Cooling Co-Generation and a bit through something similar to that in respect to Toronto. And the Hearn Generating Station and the Portland Energy Center. And more recently, Westonlands and East Bayfront on the Trundel Waterfront, which didn't proceed. Despite spending several millions of dollars. So evidently setbacks has not made me give up. We, our motivation is we're all grandparents. And so we carry on. And for example, last, in March, we organized a conference at the U of T. That was attended by one, over one hundred, which included government and municipal officials. And representatives of the real estate industry to consider the question. Should municipalities be required to conduct heating planning? As they are indeed in, in Europe. Now, after that conference, a survey indicated a lot of the attendees agreed. That, that, that should be a requirement for municipalities. And that should be supported strongly by both levels of government. Now, that was just one element of our outreach program. We've been doing a research project with McMaster University and several other subcontractors. We've even produced a documentary on that, which you can access on our website. And that is looking at two pathways to zero emissions. One pathway is that it's, it's the standard dialogue. That is accepted uncritically by many other environmental NGOs and governments. Which is to electrify everything. Now, clearly, that will only decarbonize the economy. If the province first faces out all the natural gas fire generating stations. Which will be, is easier said than done, so I don't recommend anyone pinning great hopes on that in, in the near future. The other is thermal energy networks, which involve in thermal energy storage. And it is more or less the subject of the recommendations of the whole committee regarding the transit-oriented plan. And this would be a heat plan, and we especially endorse the recommendation to seek. Expressions of interest from developers, deep-pocket developers who have the capabilities. Including deep pockets and patient capital. And I know this can be done because I did it. We voted for it in Toronto. And I'm out of time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Stevenson, have you had an opportunity to review the report? And I'm going to say the, the draft business case?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and, yeah, so you, I guess, are, are you aware of any intention of, of, of staff and consultants to work with your group? And I ask that because you, you, you may bring some hard-earned lessons as to what not to do that we could benefit from.
Well, your staff in Durham region, I've been in contact with the Boltzmann Institute. And we, we, we talked to them fairly frequently, so I, I'm pretty sure that. Items that come up of what not to do, which there are many, will, will indeed be brought to their attention.
And, and I'm delighted to hear that you're speaking with staff regularly. We, we do have a, a letter was sent prior to this communication on this. There's a suggestion that, that the electrified heating with it not being defined. Is being used to fudge the data to make the business-as-you scenario look worse. So do, do you see district heating versus heat pumps as fudging data?
Well, I, I doubt it, but the, the data. Our research project for the past two years, which has cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And an almost equal amount of pro bono time from members of the Boltzmann Institute. It's very data-intensive. We have many lines of Python coding. It, it is, it's, it's, it's difficult, but it is very data-intensive. And I, you, you have to interpret things. I mean, you have to interpret things. I mean, no one knows the price of electric, no one knows anything about the future, let alone the price of electricity. But we do know that this part of the world gets very cold in winter. You have about thirty-five degree, heating degrees at peak times, and they can last for a couple of days. And that is way beyond the capability of the current electricity system. We, we have calculated that to meet that heating load using electricity. You would need many Darlington power stations, many more nuclear power stations and an equal amount of wind power. And the cost is in the hundreds of billions of dollars. And that will greatly massively increase electricity rates. So if you are looking to the future and you want to keep energy costs down for consumers, you need to do some planning. If you don't care about climate change, you don't need to do any planning. Embraer will do all the heating planning for you. But if you do care about climate change, you better do some planning. Or you're going to, you know, there's a saying that if you don't make a decision, that is a decision. That can commit future businesses and the households to tremendous increases in hydro rates. And we've seen, we haven't seen this before. Sorry for rambling on.
No, that's fine. So, Mr. Stevenson, thank you. I am again delighted that you are, talk with staff. I have two quick comments. One, I think the province has done a lot of work on the amount of electricity that is required, a massive gap. Which, which you are identifying here and, and could in fact drive prices up. The second is, I, I would be somewhat concerned with developers with deep pockets. Most of them right now are struggling to make profits on development. We're, we're, we're seeing a, a negative environment. But I, I am sure we will hear from you again and I will look forward to that, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I hope so.
So thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Alright.
Next is Don Richardson, CEO of Minnie Aggie Corp. On behalf of the Mississaugas on the district energy system. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair, and thank you, committee council members for hearing from me today. I just want to take a, a quick moment to celebrate the, the approval of the agreement this morning between the Mississaugas of Skookog Island, First Nation. And Durham region. I believe that's probably the first agreement of its kind in Ontario. So quite an achievement and milestone today. I'm here to talk today about the district energy system and speak in support of the, the application. And introduce you quickly to Minogue Corp. So Minogue Corp is the Clean Energy Investment Corporation that's wholly owned by the Mississaugas of Skookog Island, First Nation. And our focus is on advancing sustainable economic opportunities that align with First Nation values of environmental stewardship. And community prosperity. So the proposed district energy system, we see as a transformative community energy project that's also a clean energy project. And we see a significant partnership potential to enhance the success of this project. While accessing federal and provincial funding for First Nation-led initiatives. And I have a slide up here just to capture some attention about the types of programs and the entities that Minogue Corp works with. We see the district energy system aligning with MSIFN's vision for clean energy leadership and economic reconciliation. And we believe that by leveraging waste heat from the Durham York Energy Center. The project will reduce greenhouse gases by about seventy percent compared to conventional heating. And supporting our shared climate goals. As a First Nation partner, Minogue Corp can bring proven economic funding and investment support. And existing project finance relationships through our nuclear, renewable, natural gas. And renewable energy electricity projects for significant long-term benefits for Durham region and MSIFN. As you may be aware, federal programs prioritize indigenous-led clean energy projects. Offering substantial funding to support a project like the DES. For example, Natural Resources Canada's Smart Renewables and Electrification Pathways, or SREP program. Provides up to fifty percent of project costs for clean energy infrastructure with a focus on indigenous partnerships. In some cases with indigenous partnerships, offer seventy-five percent funding. A Minogue Corp partnership could unlock millions in grants for the DES's seventy-six million phase-one capital costs. There's also the Indigenous Clean Energy Fund. This offers capacity building grants and project financing for First Nation economic partnerships. And clean energy utilities, which could also enhance the DES's financial viability. Our most recent federal energy partnership secured seventy-five percent of the capital costs. Totalling fifty-seven million in capital grants. Just think about that. Fifty-seven million dollars, seventy-five percent of the capital cost of a major project. The total of our clean energy capital partnerships is ninety-seven million, with MSIFN's equity positioned in these projects currently at forty-two million. We're currently in progress with capital raising for other clean energy project partnerships with a total capex of over a billion dollars. Minogue, Minogue Corp's invest, involvement strengthens clean energy financing by demonstrating indigenous leadership. And aligning with federal reconciliation and net zero goals. For example, the Canadian Infra- For example, the Canadian Infrastructure Bank, with whom we have a very good relationship, has committed over $1 billion to district energy systems in recent years, and a First Nation partnership and our relationship with CIB could prioritize the DES for low-interest loans, reducing municipal finance burdens. Ontario has an electricity affordability and energy transition framework that emphasizes Indigenous partnerships and clean energy projects, which also offer some incentives for our involvement in the DES. The independent electricity system operator, the ISO, supports waste heat recovery projects such as the DYEC integration with potential for revenue-sharing agreements, and Minnogy Corp. can help develop those agreements working with the region. Our participation can enhance eligibility for these types of funds, aligning with provincial priorities and federal priorities for economic inclusion and decarbonization. So we bring expertise in clean energy project development and finance, community engagement, and the ability to navigate Indigenous-specific funding streams that value these types of partnerships. We envision a model where in partnership, Minnogy Corp. can collaborate with the Joint Municipal Services Board and the Municipal Services Corporation to co-develop funding applications to maximize federal and provincial grants, to provide operational expertise through Indigenous-led training programs, creating local jobs, and ensure...
Mr. Richardson, how much longer do you have?
A minute.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. So our involvement in a nutshell can mitigate financial risks, diversify funding sources, and can enhance the project credibility with stakeholders, including the local landowner group and private sector partners. In closing a call to action, we see the DES as a bold step to a sustainable future, and Minnogy Corp. is ready to be a key partner in its success. By integrating our clean energy expertise and accessing Indigenous-focused funding, we can reduce costs, enhance community benefits, and position Durham Region as a leader in clean energy innovation. And we respectfully request council support to direct staff to engage Minnogy Corp. in the comprehensive business case study and public consultations, ensuring a First Nation economic partnership is embedded from the start. Thank you, and I welcome your questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions, members of council? Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Richardson, I'm making the assumption, I hear your request, I suspect that that will move forward, but I assume that you're speaking with staff about this project already, and so some government funding, wonderful, some additional expertise, wonderful. So that was two wonders in a row. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts the speakers list. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Chapman, could I get a 20-minute recess motion? We'll do 20 minutes, we'll do a work, we'll do a working lunch. So I ask that members of council, once I get a secondary, Counselor McDougall? Okay, so we're going to recess for 20 minutes. I'm going to ask that you bring your lunches back into the council chambers. Mr. Clerk, I'll call the vote on a 20-minute recess. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, we are in recess till, we'll make it easy, five after one. Members of council, welcome back from break. We will do a roll call. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Members of council, we have 20 members present, so we have quorum. We're back into the original agenda for the meeting. The next item is item 4.3. Ian McVey, manager of sustainability, to talk about the district energy recommended business model and governance framework. Good afternoon, Ian.
Thank you, Chair Henry, and members of council. So I'm here to present an update of the business case. It's on the agenda of Report Cow 19. As we've been hearing, district energy is a key decarbonization strategy for the region and the broader GTHA. But beyond that, there's additional benefits around energy affordability, energy security, and investment attraction that I'll also allude to through this presentation. You may recall that we delivered this, an update on this project in January of last year, and through that report, were directed by council to continue collaboration with Clarrington staff around supportive policy in the secondary plan for the Curtis Trans-Oriented Community, evaluate financing options, and evaluate ownership and governance models. So we've made some substantial progress on those recommendations, and that's what you see here in the report that's before you. So just to remind folks where, or members of committees, sorry, where we're, what we're talking about here, so the Curtis Trans-Oriented Community is planned for a population grow, a population of approximately 29,000 people, 8,000 jobs, centered around the new go station that's planned in Curtis. Clarrington has indicated a vision for this area to be a unique green community where climate change mitigation and adaptation are key considerations. The development plan is for, you know, development to happen starting in the late 2020s through to the late 2050s, so really a long-term trajectory for build-out in this area. So our district energy plan aligns with the vision that Clarrington has put forward through the draft secondary plan, but as well supports Durham's broader vision for a clean energy capital. So the red outline is really roughly the area that we're planning to serve with the district energy system, so it's really focused on the high-density areas immediately surrounding the future go station. Again, you may recall that the district energy concept is based on using waste heat from the Durham-York Energy Centre. It is the preferred concept because it has the lowest lifecycle costs compared to alternative options. We looked at heating and cooling from the Curtis Water Pollution Control Plant, as well a heating and cooling system using the Durham-York Energy Centre. So ultimately, we were landing on a heating-only system from both the cost and the greenhouse gas outcomes. The district energy system was contemplated when DIEC was first planned and built and became operational in 2015, 16. So there is sort of design in that plant that enables a future district energy system. And it was contemplated within the Community Benefits Agreement that, between the region and Clarrington, that sort of backs the establishment of that system. So the business case really tries to share risks and benefits across key stakeholders and really align multiple objectives, as I've been saying, carbon reductions, energy security, affordability, investment attraction, in particularly investment attraction in the Curtis, the Curtis Energy Park, which is in the immediate area around Clarrington, where it's planned for a manufacturing industrial land use. This is, this becomes a piece of infrastructure that helps to attract investment in that area, given the availability of heat supply. So the bottom line is that to achieve similar outcomes in the Curtis major transit station area, all buildings would need to have 100% electrified heating. We heard from our, one of our deputates around some of the broader issues and challenges with 100% electrification and the challenges that the Ontario electricity system would, will, will face as electrification of heating becomes, you know, more, more common as an alternative to natural gas. So here we have an opportunity to, you know, demonstrate the value of alternatives of leveraging waste heat. And in this case, we see, you know, the, we have, you know, lower costs compared to that electrified scenario, but also more, I think more importantly, reduced exposure to escalating electricity rates. So within our business model, we're projecting an electricity inflation factor of about 2.5%, which is, you know, based on some of the recent historical changes. I think one could argue that's probably an underestimate, given the build-out of new nuclear and distribution generation infrastructure, that we might see higher than 2.5% electricity inflation rates over the coming decades. So again, this provides an opportunity for ratepayers in this area to be insulated from that risk. We've been working closely with the landowner group over the past, say, 12 to 18 months to, you know, bring them up to speed on the plans for district energy in this area and get information from them on their development plans to inform the business case. What we've learned from them is they have actually a much more ambitious plan for development in this area, much more aggressive than when we presented to committee and council last year, to the point that now they're looking at upwards of 2 million square meters of floor area within the MTSA. So whereas the initial business case that we shared a little over a year ago used the minimum density forecast in the draft secondary plan, which equated to 700,000 square meters, 30 buildings by the mid 2050s, we've now upgraded that to use the target density in the draft secondary plan, which is about 1 million square meters, 45 connected buildings, again, half of what the landowner group is saying they would like to build in an ideal scenario. So we're really maintaining that sort of conservative orientation around the business case. If we were to put 2 million square meters, this business case would look a whole lot better, I'll tell you that. And so we're again, not trying to sugarcoat things, trying to be, try to be as realistic as we can, given, you know, we don't know the future. And to be robust to some of the changing market trends, which of course, we're seeing play, playing out now. So building on that engagement with the landowner group, we've developed an initial distribution piping plan. This is sort of the pipes in the ground for the district energy system, which is really the most significant cost component, capital cost component in the business model. And so based on what they've told us around the phasing of development, we're looking at approximately 1,400 meters of distribution piping in that first phase. Again, this is, there's an opportunity to adjust this based on evolving development plans to minimize upfront costs and minimize stranded assets. So this will be a key aspect of our work moving forward. The first phase of the district energy system is planned to be served by a temporary energy center located within the MTSA, the major transit station area, and only once there's sufficient development in the Curtis Trans-Oriented Community would we seek to invest in that interconnection to bring the supply of heat from the Durham-York Energy Centre up to the community. This is a way to phase investment and timing so that we're minimizing that, the sunk costs before there's, there's demand and revenue to repay that investment. Again, we're trying, we are orienting the business case to share risks and benefits across multiple, the multiple stakeholders and entities that have an interest. So the business case is presented as cost-neutral from the utility, the district energy utility perspective, including a return on equity, with competitive costs for ratepayers in the area, and similar capital costs for landowners relative to that electrified reference case. So this is, this is critical to the scenario. We want to align costs with what their, their next alternative would be, so that there's not, this is not seen as sort of an additional financial burden on development at a time where that's front and center in conversations that we're having. So we think we've, and there are opportunities to adjust this model to perhaps reduce the return on equity for the utility, to either, you know, reduce rates for ratepayers or, you know, sweeten the pot for landowners. That's be part of the business case development that we're, that we will proceed on moving forward to, you know, make sure we're aligning, aligning risks and benefits appropriately. This presents the proposed or the estimated utility cash flow based on the model that we have. You can see, of course, for the initial years, there is a cash flow deficit, which is not uncommon for, you know, when establishing a new utility where you're sinking costs in infrastructure that's repaid over time. Important things to note here is that this model does not include any grant funding or any low-cost capital that we might be eligible for. We've heard from one of the deputates, there's, there's possibility of investment there. I'll introduce some financial opportunities that we're looking at as well, but again, we've not included those in the business case for now because we don't want to, you know, count the chickens before they hatch, so to speak. We are looking at, and I'm getting into sort of the business and the ownership and governance model, really what we're looking to do is develop an approach to manage significant risks. We've heard earlier, of course, that there's a number of examples of failure with municipal district energy systems, including one that's in the attachment in your, in the report. So really, we need to be paying attention to connection risk, i.e. will the buildings connect, and the timing risk, when will they connect? We cannot take a philosophy of build it and they will come, that, you know, the people have tried that, they didn't come, the investment was sold at a loss. That's not the position we want to be in. And the timing risk is sort of when will they connect? We don't have certainty of the phasing and when development will happen, and in particular in the, in this current context, a lot of, you know, delays and deferral of development because of the capital cost uncertainty. So we've evaluated policy tools across North America to manage these risks and given the particular context within the Curtis Trans-Oriented Community. And because of that, we are, we are recommending to mitigate the connection risk, having a mandatory connection policy within the defined service area, i.e. that high-density mixed-use core immediately surrounding the go station. That connection bylaw is supported with competitive rates, competitive connection fees, as I mentioned, potentially looking at streamlined permitting or other incentives. Those sort of carrots, if I will, are only possible if we have universal connection within the system to justify, to justify the cost. So there is, you know, there's a balance there that we are looking to play with the landowner group. In terms of timing risk, much of what I've been saying, we don't want to build too much too soon and minimize early investment, that temporary energy center to manage that initial growth and really, you know, looking at cost-benefit analysis to extend service to new areas, potentially beyond that immediate mixed-use core, as well as in the Curtis Energy Park, assuming and hopefully with the new employment and industrial land use in that area. So building on this, the, you know, to manage connection risk and ensure affordability for residents, we are proposing a municipal ownership model, joint municipal ownership with the municipality of Clarrington. That really positions us to have the jurisdiction to implement the connection requirement, but also to ensure that there's transparency around rate setting. The Joint Municipal Services Board would act almost like a quasi-regulatory body in terms of pass, setting rates and connection fees that would be done in a public process, transparent, so that there's, you know, accountability to ratepayers and taxpayers of both municipalities. And then the actual delivery of the infrastructure would be through Municipal Services Corporation, again jointly owned, that would, you know, be responsible for delivering the infrastructure. That model enables access to debt capital, including through the Canada Infrastructure Bank, but also other commercial or institutional sources of investment. But also does not preclude partnerships with private sector, and in fact, we are intending to partner with private sector energy developers. N-Wave is a good example, that operates the Deep Lake Water Cooling in downtown Toronto, for example, that might be interested, Corix, Creative Energy, there's multiple firms that have a lot of experience in this space. So the plan would be to add, to partner with the private sector, with a private sector entity that has experience in this space, to operate, potentially design, build, operate, and maintain the system on behalf of the Municipal Services Corporation. Again, lots of funding out there, grant, low-cost capital. I'm not going to go through each of these systems in detail, but you can see that there's, there's lots of funding for municipally-owned systems, but also for privately-owned systems across the country, both grant and low-cost financing. We anticipate, if we're successful, being on this list in the, you know, moving forward. So in terms of the target development timeline, where the critical path is getting a system in place for that, those initial buildings to be in place, i.e. aligned with the delivery of the go station. So we are, as part of the recommendations in the report, seeking direction to, you know, work, continue to work with Clarrington to ensure that the Curtis Secondary Plan has enabling and supportive policy, direction to establish a municipal services corporation, which includes development of business case, public consultation, as also engagement with financial institutions and potentially private sector energy development partners to, to, partner with us on the development of the system. All of that over the next, say, 18 months, towards the end of, you know, we would bring a report back in 2026 to establish the entity, enabling us to have a Phase 1 design and procurement of the district energy system by 2027 and the DES in place by 2029. So that's the initial plan. I'm not going to go further on that at this time. So bottom line, what we're looking at is... So bottom line, what we're looking at is with council endorsement, should that come, you know, the next steps would be to establish a proposed governance and ownership model, including, as I mentioned, the development of a comprehensive business case study that would include financial aspects, costs, revenues, capital structure, staffing, governance, all that sort of, the detailed, the details around how this corporation would operate. That's a requirement of the Municipal Service Corporation regulation, along with conducting a public consultation. We have retained legal expertise and will continue to work with them to ensure compliance with relevant provincial legislation, including the new legislation that came out a couple days ago. And so ensure that what we're setting up is, you know, is aligning and compliance with relevant legislation. So the plan would be to bring back for approval that detailed comprehensive business case either later this year, maybe into early next, to seek approval and move forward with establishing the Municipal Services Corporation and the Joint Municipal Services Board. So with that, I will stop. Thank you. I look forward to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mayor Watten.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and to you, Ian. Thank you. I just have a couple of questions with respect to the temporary energy center. I'm sure we have no idea of costs, but I, actually, I guess that's part of the question. What do you, what sort of costs would we be looking at?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to you, Mayor Watten, that we're roughly speaking that first phase of development with what we're estimating fourteen hundred meters of distribution piping, the temporary energy center, roughly about a $25 million capital expenditure. Most of that is in the pipe in the ground. The energy center itself is not a significant cost. I'd have to, it's on my computer over there, but I think it's about $4 million. This is like an extra-large shipping container. It's not a.
It doesn't look very big. That's kind of why I was asking.
It really is the pipe in the ground. That's the capital cost that drives, that drives the capital costs.
Okay, so further to that, then, once sufficient development occurred or is underway, we would talk, we would anticipate connecting to the DYE-C.
That's right.
So my next question is, would we have to increase the capacity of the DYE-C if the full buildout was realized?
Right. Through the chair to you, anticipated this question. And in fact, no, the business case is built on the current capacity of the Durham York Energy Center, fourteen thousand tons per year.
Hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, sorry, missed the zero. Yes, apologies.
Okay, and one further question then. Do you know what the, I mean, every facility has a life cycle, is before improvements or maintenance are required. So for the Durham York Energy Center, even though we wouldn't need to necessarily increase capacity, are we anticipating any necessary upgrades to it?
Through the chair to you, there would be an investment in a heat exchanger to sort of take the heat off of the turbine, steam turbine that is at the facility. I'm looking at you, Andrew. Is this something you can help me back me up on?
Yeah, I can jump in a little bit. So in terms of ongoing maintenance with the facility, so, you know, at the, at the timing, we would be looking at loading in, it would be the end of the initial twenty-year agreement. The, you know, the handback conditions of that facility are expecting to have at least another five years of life within that facility. But really, when we're talking about these types of facilities, you know, the maintenance is always ongoing and regular in terms of preventative maintenance. Certainly, every component has a different life cycle, and there would be, at various points, you know, various levels of investment needed to continue that under existing contract that's all built into the, to the rates we pay. And that would be, depending on how the contracts look going forward, that would be how it would be structured. But nothing in particular from the DYC perspective, again, other than some of that internal pipeling, just where mid-turbine, where that steam comes off to a heat exchanger to tie into the system.
Thank you. And remind me again when that twenty years is.
Twenty thirty-six.
Sorry?
Twenty thirty-six.
Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ian.
Mayor Foster.
Mr. Chair, I was going to give you a motion to put the report on the table, and we could deal with the presentation and the report at the same time.
Yeah, we still have to deal with the correspondence, Mayor Foster.
Would that not be through the report? Be included with that?
Correspondence has to be referred to the report.
Ah, all righty. Well, you know what? I'll save my questions. Thank you. I'll save my questions for the, for the report. All good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor Pietri. Push your button again, please. There you go.
Chair, I just wanted to ask some questions relating to the, some of the provincial and federal sort of realities that are going to be sort of at hand when coming to an understanding of what the new policies, new ministers will be. Just wondering how that would play into some of the work that you're doing. I know that Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing is new in the province of Ontario, took a look at the cabinet at the federal level, and I think there's a lot of new things that are going to affect the work that we're doing. Is there anything that's anticipated that we've done already that may be obsolete or that we're doing that may not be required or requiring more of? Could you expand on that? Because I see corporation, like you're looking at, you know, putting together corporation, hearing some of the ministers at the provincial and level speak, they're trying to simplify things as opposed to compound. I'm just wondering whether or not we're heading in the right direction.
Through the chair to you, Counselor Mayor Pietri. I can say certainly at the federal level, there's a lot of support through the Canada Infrastructure Bank, as I mentioned. This is housing-enabling infrastructure because the alternatives to supplying heating demand within this area would require significant additional infrastructure, be it electrical or otherwise, that would take longer and be more expensive on a life cycle basis. So we think it's important to sort of, this does enable housing development in the area, and so in that regard is aligned with, I'd say, both federal and provincial priorities. At the provincial level, it's hard to say, as we've, I think there's, I think, a little bit of a underappreciation of the potential for thermal networks and district energy to manage the energy demand that we're seeing. So I think there's probably some more work to do to, potentially through AMO or other avenues, to make the case and ensure that there is support. What I would say is that the, we've done the policy analysis, Municipal Act, Public Utilities Act. What we're proposing here is aligned with current legislation regulations as it relates to delivery of the system.
Okay, and I guess that through you, Chair, I appreciate that. I just want us to be very cognizant of the direction that things are moving in and because of the pressures that I think everyone is aware of. Everyone is talking about affordability and, you know, activation of products. We don't want to necessarily, you know, do things like maybe the 1950s, but we would like to make sure that we're not in the way of a lot of the improvements or the activation of products that are required. So I don't want us to be at odds, and I guess the question through you, Chair, is, are we taking a look at the policies? Because I think even at the federal level, those are going to change quite significantly in comparisons to the past ten years. Looking at the provincial policies and seeking an understanding of where the housing file is going and how we can anticipate the impacts will be to us in getting out of the way a bit of, you know, the restrictions that are, I think, potentially seen as ineffective by either governments.
So through the chair to you, I mean, for example, the federal government just closed financing for Charlottetown's district energy system, which is based on an energy-from-waste facility. So again, there is precedent, a building precedent for federal investment in these types of systems as, you know, critical infrastructure, not just for decarbonization, but also for energy security, energy affordability, and the like. So I think that's important, part of the, what this, you know, what this looks like as a, you know, some of the benefits. And related to that, again, looking at the alternative, if we don't have a district energy system, we're looking at, you know, electrified heating, other systems, greater electricity demand, larger transformer, larger land need, potentially longer timeline to deliver that transformer, especially given supply chain constraints in the electrical sector writ large. So again, I think there's opportunities for this system to actually support and enable housing development, streamline delivery of the infrastructure that's going to be needed to service what's ultimately going to be a high-density neighborhood.
And just the last question through you, Chair, because I think the unintended consequences and the reality is what we're trying to, like, you know, get to a better understanding of and appreciate the work that you're doing, but want to make sure that at no point doing this puts us in a position where we're denying any provider of, or activating provider of housing, the ability to be able to tap into the system because the capacity's not there. I guess what I'm trying to say is, this is not going to be a process where we're going to be adjudicating who has capacity and who doesn't. Is that the case? Okay, that's something I want to make sure is clear and understood because that's something that we're running into issues with in other utilities, and it's becoming regrettable. And it's largely coming to our attention that we're a point of concern when allocating capacity in certain areas. And I know that the province has been perturbed by that as well because they've heard of it. So I thank you for the opportunity to be able to address. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, how does the Ontario Energy Board fit into this and also the independent energy supply operators?
Through the chair to you, Counselor Neal. So the Ontario Energy Board does not regulate heating utilities. So they operate outside of that provincial regulatory body, which is part of the reason why we're proposing that Joint Municipal Services Board, so we have, you know, let's say, a quasi-regulatory body, just at least to have transparency around rate setting. One of the challenges with district heating, because there isn't OEB regulation, is these are, these end up being private contracts negotiated. And so there isn't, you know, there's not clear that there's fairness between contracts and between users. And, you know, and effect becomes a quasi-monopoly that's unregulated. So like, that's part of the reason why we're proposing this model is to, you know, provide that, that function in the absence of the OEB regulation. The IESO, Independent Electricity System Operator, again, they are electricity system operator, they don't, they don't really have a big role in heat, heat supply, or any role, let's say. So, I mean, there is, there is an implication for the electricity supply contract that the Durham York Energy Center has with the IESO. We currently have a contract that runs to 2035-ish. And so if we were to divert steam, let's say, to heat, heat supply, that might have an impact on the contract that we have with the power purchase agreement contract. We have contemplated that in the business model and, or accounted for that in the business model. But again, once that agreement comes up for renewal, which is frankly right about the time that we're proposing to connect DIAC, there'll be an ability to renegotiate that power purchase agreement, assuming that they're still looking for power, which I imagine they will, in a way that sort of, that, you know, contemplates both the heating and the power supply from the facility.
Yeah, I guess, and you anticipated, my next question, that was exactly how that contract's going to align. But I guess if you, if everyone gets in the free market in regards to energy, is the region going to be safe in regards entering into something that the market might dictate?
Through the chair, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Because you said they're individual contracts.
So, I mean, through the chair to you, in this case, we would have a district energy system in the area with connections to all the buildings. We're not, we're not mandating use of that district energy system, and so theoretically they could install their own heat pumps or call Enbridge to bring in gas lines, let's say. But I would suggest that they have already spent money to connect to the system and that it would not be in their financial interest to then double up or trip, you know, have alternative systems for what's already being provided at an affordable and reliable service.
Yeah, I'm a little bit fuzzy on that, but so will you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kerr.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, Ian. How will the homeowner pay for this? Or will they pay for it? Like, how does that work out and basically what's it worth? We know what it's apparently going to cost, but what's it worth?
Through the chair to you. So this is serving the high-density development immediately surrounding the go station. This is largely condos, apartment buildings, retail, commercial, institutional land use. So this isn't unlikely to be a direct sort of homeowner billing scenario. We'd be dealing with condo bards, apartment owners, commercial, institutional building owners. The billing would be done by the Municipal Services Corporation, just like we do for electricity, water, sewer. So there would be, you know, a user rate that would be applied based on, you know, the demand within, within that building.
Okay. We're in northern climate, but we're also warm in the summer. How does this relate to cooling?
Great question through the chair. So again, we did the detailed analysis in the previous phase that looked at the economics of providing heating and cooling. Ultimately, based on the system and the context that we have, we decided that this, that a heating-only district energy system would be the preferred option because the capital costs of running cooling pipes, cooling pipes have to be larger than heating. And so the economics of that relative to the scenario where each building installs their own chiller didn't make sense. So in this case, the building would have their heating supplied by the district energy system and cooling supplied through a building-level chiller. We have engaged with the landowner group around their interest in bringing cooling into the system. Again, it doesn't make sense economically, financially, didn't appear to make sense from the perspective of the utility, and so wasn't what we brought forward to council. But they might have interests in a centralized district cooling system that, you know, that value, to go to your point, value that beyond what we're showing in our financial model. So those conversations are ongoing, and it could be that, that they indicate an interest and that that comes forward through a future business case, but at this point, heating only.
Okay, I guess my last comment would be, my first year on regional council, I suggested they use this heating and CO2 to drive a large greenhouse operation that could be run with Durham College. I see this as a creative additional use of the energy from the Durham York Center. I still would like to see that greenhouse used with the carbon dioxide, but that's a question or a possibility for another day. Thank you.
Sure.
That exhausts the questions, but wouldn't it be nice at the same time, we're running all those pipes, to make sure that there is fiber delivered along those trenches at the same time? Just suggesting. But anyways, that exhausts the questions, so thank you. Members of council, there are two correspondence items. They both are to be referred to this report, 2025 Cal 19. Could I get a mover in a second here, please? Moved by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Anderson, that the direction be to refer both these items to report number 2025 Cal 19. Call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. That brings us to reports. Mr. Clerk, we've done seven point one, we have seven point two and seven point three. Could I get both reports moved? Counselor Anderson, Counselor Brenner, polls. Mayor Foster.
Actually, both of them, sir.
You're going to pull both of them?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mayor Foster, please continue.
Okay, so we've got seven point two, so that is on the floor now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess through to staff, we had the delegate, Mr. Richardson was suggesting that included in this motion was a requirement that we engage Minogue on this. To staff, can you take that as direction or should we have an amendment to include that in the recommendations?
Go to Ian.
Through the chair to you, Mayor Foster. I think, yes, we can take that as direction and, you know, include that. I think, yes, we can take that as direction and, you know, include that. I mean, this is on the, on the, one of the recommendations is to engage private sector and other partners, so we can certainly take that as direction.
We'll just include them in that. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you ever so much. With regards to some of, and I'll explain, I'm going to need a little bit of latitude, Mr. Chair. With regards to some of, of the items in the correspondence that was sent, a quote about fossil fuels, saying that this is worse, the heat source would be garbage, including plastics, woods, and other recyclables. Though that is not burnt at the EFW now, is this going to have us change what is allowed at the EFW today? I already know the answer to that, but we need it articulated.
No. Thank you.
Okay, so, so that statement is, is inaccurate on that. This would be, according to another letter, a, a source of, of high carbon, because the DYEC emits carbon. We are taking waste heat, correct?
Correct.
So outside of the, you know, the, the gas-fired plant, be it backup or when we're starting this, will additional carbon be generated to make use of this waste heat?
No.
Okay. And thank you for that. So I will explain to, to members of committee here. On Monday evening, we had a proposal that would have seen some development on the waterfront and a significant, a gem of a waterfront park. The, the AD, anaerobic digester, which I'm told is nowhere on the region's radar right now, as well as expansion of the EFW, was brought up. I, I'm going to suggest with a number of specious comments and, and fantastical references to, to maybe going. I, I don't know that members of regional council can understand how even ten years later, this, this issue dominates Clarrington Council, is used as a wedge issue and continues, continues to be used as something to try to generate as much controversy as possible. We are seeing that in the correspondence that is being sent on this. Clarrington has a number of questions and concerns around this. We are supportive. We are excited to see it, see it moving forward. But I think each member of, of committee here, regional council, needs to expect that, that every effort is going to be made to make this controversial. That is going to spill onto the floor of Clarrington Council, which has been the case for a, a very long time. So in a negative way, it's a gift that keeps on giving. I hope you would all be cognizant of that. And bottom line, Ian, as reports coming back, you'll be looking at the changes that the province has, has recently made on this. We're, we're going to tighten up the numbers, tighten up a number of things when, when this comes back to us, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the diatribe, Mr. Chair, and to members of committee, thank you for listening.
Okay, so there are no other speakers. We're calling the vote on item seven point two. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Mayor Foster, Counselor Neil, push your button, please. Oh, you're opposed? Okay. Mr. Clerk, can you please note that? Thank you. Mayor Foster on seven point three.
Yeah, thank you. So support this. It makes all the sense in the world. As, as we are looking at this, you know, I want to state and we need to state, one, the province needs to move forward with those regs. This directly, as, as we're looking at, at the district energy system and the costs associated to, to that same set of buildings with the, the transit station fees. One, encouraging the government to please get on with that. We've done this many times. But, Mr. Chair, have, have we articulated exceptionally clearly that building a state, one station in Bowmanville and eventually getting to the other three stations is absolutely not acceptable? And building one, or building one station in Oshawa and getting on to the three other stations at some point in the distant future is completely unacceptable? Is, is the province aware of this? And is, is this council supportive and aware of that?
So, Mayor Foster, of staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is our, our purpose is to support all four stations at the same time, and that's the concept around the transit-oriented charges that we've been working on with the province, hoping that they approve the regulation shortly. As you're aware, cost of construction goes up every day, and the longer it takes to, to move that along, to allow us to start to do what we need to do, is just adding money to the project.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
That's pretty much correct. That's in a nutshell. Yeah, I'm getting nods from everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, and we have articulated that before, but my understanding is the province needs to be abundantly aware of, of how we need to proceed with this. So I know that my colleagues in Oshawa will be exceptionally unhappy if, if one station's built in Bowmanville, and understandably so. We will be exceptionally unhappy if, if something happens that sees one station to the east in Oshawa built and many years before the other three. So thank you. I, I thought that those were words that were worthwhile echoing a bit. Thank you ever so much, sir.
Yes, so Mayor Foster, just and council, so you're aware, yesterday I took the opportunity to talk to one of our ministers from Durham Region to say that it would now be inappropriate time to have a photo taken at the Nob Hill Farms property now that is demolished. And it would be a, a great thing for them to participate in, along with the region, the city of Oshawa, municipality of Clarrington, and this council. We're looking forward to that announcement. On top of the great announcement we had yesterday on the removing of the tolls on the 407 East from the 115 to the, to, from the Brock Street to the 115. And on that note, I want to thank all members of council for their efforts, their work. I know many of you are connected to, to your MPs and your community. Your advocacy was a big part of getting this done, and you, you and staff deserve a big round of applause, so thank you. Okay, on seven point three, Mr. Clerk, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? None, that carries. Mr. Clerk, we dealt with eight point one. It's done. There are no confidential matters. The last item in the day would be an adjournment. I'm looking for a motion. Counselor Kerr, seconded by Counselor Crawford on adjournment. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Have a wonderful day. Thank you very much, staff, for the great work again.